Good evening, everyone. I like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostick.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe.
Terrific. Alright, well, there are no changes to our agenda this evening. Moving forward, on Monday night, April 29th, we will have another budget work session here in the auditorium that will start at 7:30. This will be continuation of our work session this evening on budget reconciliation. Then on Wednesday, May 1st, we'll have our meeting here. We have a voting session, which will be a resolution supporting refugee resettlement in Tacoma Park, a second reading ordinance approving land exchange for the Tacoma Park Recreation Center that was an item deferred since April 17th, a single reading ordinance approving for a contract for a tree removal service, and a resolution providing for appointments to committees. And if needed, after our Monday night, which we probably will, we will have another budget work session on budget reconciliation. And then on Wednesday, May 8th, we have the President of Washington Adventist Hospital, who will be joining us for a presentation regarding the relocation plans for the hospital. And we'll have our voting session. It will be the first reading ordinance adopting our FY 2020 budget and tax rate. And then on Wednesday, May 15th, our next meeting, at 6:30 to 7:30, we'll have our committee volunteer reception. And so if people are around for that, please come, so we can thank all our volunteers who serve on committees in the city. And then our regular meeting, so far, we have scheduled the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2020 budget and tax rate, but likely other things will come onto the agenda. So tonight, to begin with, we have public hearings on the constant yield tax rate, and then a public hearing on the FY 2020 budget. I did not see anyone signed up for a public hearing on the constant yield tax rate. Is there anyone who would like to speak to that? Or move on to the... Do you want to talk about the constant yield? Or there's the...
Yeah, hold on. I didn't know if you could speak on the other one also, on the proposed budget cuts as proper by the city manager.
You could do both, Mr. Huberman.
That's what I was unsure of.
Yes. Let me turn on the mic there.
Good evening, folks. Paul Hubener, Ward 3, Carroll Avenue. The important issue before all of us tonight is the constant yield tax rate and the city manager's proposal to exceed that rate by 5.7, almost 6%. In a decade that had a 1.73% annual rate of inflation, the city manager proposes to triple that rate and exceed the constant yield by three times. The constant yield tax rate is a percent of assessed property value that will generate the same amount of revenue as the prior year's taxes while accounting for the increase in assessments. Maryland state law requires this public hearing and does so to achieve some type of fairness by local governments and tax policy. Oh, that property owners had the same luxury as the city government to keep a constant income from year to year, but we have felt the increases in gasoline, natural gas, cable bills, and taxes. Our assessments have risen, mined by $126,000 in three years. Not coincidentally, personnel costs in the city have risen by $688,000 per year for the last three years, and now the city manager wants more. But residents are boxed in on both ends. Older homeowners are constrained by fixed incomes. Younger homeowners contend with tuition reparations and childcare that is considered to be moderate in Montgomery County at $2,000 per month, according to NPR. The council espouses fiscal sustainability, but tripling the constant yield rate is not fiscally responsible. Increased taxes have continued to drive what is left of any middle class out of Tacoma Park. And the proposed course of taxation will continue this gentrification and the class dichotomy of rich homeowners and poor renters. If the council legislates that rents cannot exceed the rate of inflation, why should strapped homeowners be saddled with three times the rate? Talk is cheap. The policy of triple payment by homeowners is discriminatory and forces out longtime homeowners. Start being fiscally sustainable and keep property taxes at the constant yield rate. Represent the residents, not the bloated bureaucracy.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the constant yield rate? Okay, then we'll move on to our public hearing on the FY 2020 budget. So we have a couple people signed up, so I will call your name. Kevin Adler, you're first.
Where's the sign-up sheet?
I'll just call you, Mr. Huberman. I have the sign-up sheet. You can go after everyone. I'll add your name.
Well, I'll wait. I'll go last.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Adler.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kevin Adler. I'm in Ward 2, and I'm here on behalf of the Tacoma Park Folk Festival. First, I'd like to thank the current and former city council members for their ongoing support of the... financial support of the festival, and also the city staff in numerous departments that have helped us out over the years. I'm here tonight because the Folk Festival is seeking a grant from the city, and I want to provide you with a brief progress report. The Folk Festival will be held this year on Sunday, September 8th, and at the Tacoma Park Middle School as usual. I'm going to repeat the date so that everyone can write it down, and it's Sunday, September 8th. As always, it will be free and family-friendly and a wonderful time. We're well on our way to producing a great event this year, and in fact, about a dozen committee members are meeting in the azalea room right now. It's our monthly meeting, and I'm going to go back over there when I'm done over here. We've received applications from about 120 performers, and based on what I've seen, it's going to be a great set of shows on our six stages. We're still reaching out for artisan, applications for our craft show. Soon, we'll be doing the community tables applications, which is a really special part of the festival. It makes it a very inclusive event, and I'm sure that many of the city departments will be represented as community tables again. One of our concerns several years ago was whether we had a sufficient number of volunteers to keep this festival going, and I'm so pleased to say that that problem has really been solved. Credit goes to a lot of people, but especially Robin Stern, who's in her third year as the co-chair. In addition to doing a great job leading the festival for these last couple of years, Robin has helped recruit many new volunteers and found ways to incorporate their skills and interests. And thanks to these new folks, we'll be having four pre-festival events this summer at some of the local restaurants here. And this July 4th, we'll be joining the Independence Day Parade for the first time in at least five years. Our only issue at the moment is that the renovations at the middle school are due to start this summer, and of course, that's where the festival's held. Robin has been speaking regularly with the principal, and in fact, has a conference call with her tomorrow, and they discussed some options and workarounds, and we'll just have to see what the status of the construction is in September. We learned a lot about flexibility and workarounds last year, because you might remember, we made a decision the day before to bring it indoors because there was a forecast of a major storm. Everyone pulled together. It worked out great. We're, of course, hoping for better weather this year, but it'll be a great event regardless. So once again, thank you for your support, and I hope you all can make it on Sunday, September 8th. Thanks.
Thank you so much, and thank everyone when you go back to the meeting. Next, I have Maxine Hillary.
I remind the city manager and council that social justice is also realized by honoring the diversity of interests and perspectives of all who live here, not just the activists who use this town as a stepping stone to higher office or to gain "progressive" street cred. Social justice is not proposing a tax increase in a year when middle-income people got shafted by the Trump tax laws, when the county assessor raised everyone's taxes, when gas prices are accelerating and interest rates rising. Social justice is being cognizant that people on fixed incomes are leaving homes they've lived in for decades while our mayor plays to the camera, responding to another ridiculous Trump tweet slamming sanctuary cities, and we're asked to accept a budget that overspends and dismisses ways to help people right here. A sustainability coordinator in a community that doesn't let us remove a tree to accommodate solar power, or spending more money on down payment assistance, sounds great, but it isn't social justice. Housing is a human right. Homeownership comes with the ability to put money down, pay a mortgage, maintenance, and taxes. I saved 15 years for a down payment and worked at two jobs to afford the rest. This smacks of a feel-good setup to a homeowner who will struggle to maintain all of that and unfair to those of us who might need a little help with the homes we put down payments for without anyone's assistance, i.e. our seniors and veterans and disabled. Social justice is respecting the taxpayer and not demanding that their money go for a social agenda while we still don't have municipal wireless, help with erosion and tree management, and better services for everyone. We don't have a municipal gym, a small business incubator, a craft center, community garden plots, a tool library, medical copay assistance. While I feel for people at the border and have engaged in efforts to assist, I do not feel that my taxes should be increased to take care of people not even here, better than we do those that have been here for years. We barely have a tax base. Rent control is unsustainable and doesn't help create one. There are better and more equitable mechanisms for affordable housing, and we should look into them. We should drop the arborist and let the county handle that function, and put more resources into economic development so that the 50% of people who own homes aren't the only source of revenue. It's time we lived within our means and quit trying to save the world on the backs of the middle-class homeowner. Finally, I share this from another TP constituent who wrote, "In the past two years, our spending has been an average of 94% higher across all line items," I compared. "We spend 100% to 300% more on travel, conferences, even for similar full-time employees. In FY 19, Tacoma Park in Hyattsville employed three full-time employees in senior administration. Tacoma budgeted $53,000 on training versus $17,000 in Hyattsville. Why a city manager who makes twice the national average of city managers incomparable or larger town needs a training budget like that is beyond me. We're being hoodwinked for an irresponsible and expensive agenda not all of us signed on to. It's time we extended social justice to ourselves."
Thank you. Mr. Kenneth Lyons.
Good evening, distinguished members of the council. My name is Kenneth Lyons. As I was reading briefly the manager's comments, I think she listed several items that are priority. One, the closing of... or the moving of Adventist Hospital, the Purple Line, and so on. I do agree with the young lady here that affordable housing should be a priority. Your base, your tax base, is leaving, for the most part, and that which is not leaving is simply growing older, and they're assigned to fixing income. So that's a significant issue that should be remedied. The other is Purple Line, and I know... I don't know if Purple Line is covered in terms of the infrastructure here in Tacoma Park, but I think this budget has to pay attention to and make a priority, the infrastructure, the crumbling infrastructure here in Tacoma Park. It is borderline, almost like the district, that you can't drive two blocks while hitting a major pothole. So those are major, major issues. The other one is the moving of Washington Adventist Hospital, which is huge when it comes to access to health care, which is a priority in any neighborhood that you live in, in any community that you live in. And simply the moving of that, or noticing, or recognizing the moving of Washington Adventist is not enough. I think we have to put safeguards in place, and this budget should reflect those safeguards to ensure that the community is well taken care of in terms of its health care. As you well know, and if you don't know, within a district of Columbia, we are using your health care infrastructure, your medical facilities here more and more. They average 400 runs a day. I would say almost 10% of those runs are now being transported to your hospital, to our hospitals that we pay taxes for, putting an additional strain on our health care infrastructure. So whether we start talking about primary health care centers, or whatever you were talking about, putting another health facility here, health care or access to health care should be the priority, or one of the priorities in this budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Arthur David Olson.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue. City manager has proposed a $650,000 addition to the equipment replacement reserve, the ERR, this year. Terry Siemens, Jason Dan Weber, and Susan Chung provided me with the city's ERR spreadsheet in electronic form. I hope council members will take a look at it. If you at least look at the bottom line, you'll see one problem. The total calculated contribution for this year is about $675,000, $25,000 over what's budgeted. If you look up from the bottom line, you'll see some items marked "no contribution," equipment the city owns and is wearing out, but for which no replacement funds are being saved. One thing you won't see unless you look at the formulas, the contribution for four items has been reduced by $1,222.06 each. If the "no contribution" and $12,000 reductions are eliminated, the calculated total grows to $700,000. Most importantly, another thing you won't see unless you look at the formulas, is that the annual contribution for individual items assumes that the city is earning 2% interest in the ERR balance. That may have been right when the spreadsheet was created years ago. It is far too high right now, as you'll know if you have a personal money market account. And when the estimated interest earned is too high, the calculated additional contribution will be too low. Changing the interest rate to a more realistic, still optimistic 1%, produces a calculated total contribution of about $760,000. The city manager is correct in stating that the proposed $650,000 addition is adequate for the next few years. But since equipment lasts for up to 30 years, underfunding the reserve can lead to spikes in reserve additions down the line. Since I have a life expectancy of 17 years and hope to stay in Tacoma Park, I want to think longer term and avoid those spikes. For this year, I hope the council will at least boost the reserve addition to the $675,000 called for in the unmodified spreadsheet. For the future, I hope the council will annually ask the city manager to provide not only a recommended amount to add to the ERR, but also the full funding amount based on all the city's equipment and on a realistic interest rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Bloxstein.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm David Bloxstein. I live on Sycamore Avenue, Ward 3. I have a doctorate in ecology. I've been a federally funded climate change educator, and I'm a member of the Tacoma Park Environment Committee. First, I want to thank you. I want to thank the council for your recognition that we are in a global climate change emergency. Climate change is an issue of justice. It is that the disproportionate impacts on the people of lower economic and impoverished communities around the world, including here in Tacoma Park, are the greatest. I want to thank you for your support in your council priorities, environmentally sustainable community, as one of the top five priorities of the council. I want to thank you in advance for restoring the funding for the city Office of Sustainability at the level, at least at the level, that it was funded in the previous fiscal year. The Office of Sustainability has been... done fabulous work. It has saved energy. It has reduced greenhouse gases. It has saved money for the city. It has saved money for our residents. This is the definition of sustainability, environment, equity, and economics. It's doing all of those things. So it should be in line for a big raise. For some reason, that's not what the budget proposes. So I would strongly encourage you to restore funding at least to the previous level so that this office can continue Tacoma Park's leadership in sustainability, because if Tacoma Park is not leading in sustainability, who's going to do it? If not us, who? If not now, when? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Mary J. Machui.
Hi, everybody. Mary J. Machui, Ward 2, founder of Parents of Special Needs Adults. This is... April is Autism Awareness Month. I'm holding here the Holy Grail for property owners here that Ms. Dibala kindly disseminated to me when I asked for it, and I've given to some of my lower-income residents, neighbors, and friends. I do not have a degree in economics. Matter of fact, I think I got a D in it in college, but I can see what's happening in my neighborhood. We've lived there over 32 years. I can see the diversity leaving. I see the... my black neighbors leaving. I see the pop-ups, the developers, like vultures coming around, even calling me at home and calling my neighbors. They're like vultures. Why can't you do something about them? You care about housing, low-cost housing for the apartments. How about the neighborhoods? How about the homes? Why are... why is there such racial disequity? How come all the black homeowners are leaving and they're going to the apartments and white people are moving in? I mean, it's... you can see it happening. I don't have to be an idiot, just a degree in economics, to see it happening, and I'm sorry, but I get very emotional about it, because this is my neighborhood, and I plan, like Arthur David said, plan to be here a long time. If I can afford it, that's another thing. And this... I have a son with severe disabilities, and this does not give any... there's several here, and there's renters too, Arthur David. Renters also special that they can get credits, but there's none of them that give people of... with black people and people with disabilities and Native Americans. There's three groups that need the help the most. They do not get it here. Nothing. There's nothing in these county and state that gives special dispensations for people with disabilities or Native American or black Americans. There's three groups that are economically lower in the United States, and I'm just upset about it, you know? And I mean, and I want to thank also, anyone, Casey, for yesterday, her and Cindy, we're speaking to some of us at the Spring Hill Bakery, and thank you for listening. I have... I don't really hold my breath. I've been complaining about the lack of help for people with disabilities for over three years, and I haven't seen much happen, but I'm hoping and praying, or hopey whatever, you know, hopey whatever, helping something will help us sometimes, and thank you very much.
I don't want to hog the mic. I wasn't really prepared for this, but I wanted to make a couple of comments about the proposed cuts by the city manager. Just from the top of my head, I recollect $74,700 worth of conferences. That's nice work after your pay. $149,000 to send five or so police officers to Chicago? And when they cut it, they cut $40,000 to eliminate three posts there? That means somebody's paying us. We're paying $13,000 a person to send a cop to Chicago to learn about community policing? I mean, is that the only place where it's taught? It sounds like a junket to me. $287,000 was a total cost of, quote, "miscellaneous engineering expenses." We have a permanent, full-time... I presume he's a professional engineer, on staff. What are these miscellaneous engineering things? Are we talking about mechanical engineering? Are we talking about high-volume electrical power generation? What is this? You know? And I just want to say about sustainability, I thought the first year, it was a great idea, but I'm going to tell you, that lady did nothing for me. When I went up there, it was some college kid that was the one that processed my paperwork in the Public Works Building. So it was a good thing the first year, but you guys got to learn how to be quick on your feet. This is a mobile society. It's a dynamic environment. If she's such a great find, then let her be the economic development person. Let her do something else, but don't just hire somebody and give them a lifetime job. That's the difference between public employees and private industry. And it's the reason that many of us that scuffled our whole lives just to get a job are resentful of people that make these fat salaries, and it seems like all they do is sit around, have a meeting about when to have a meeting. And I think that this is a more prevalent attitude than you might believe, but I mean, you guys got to be real, you know? I've been here for 30 years, and I moved here in 1974. I lived here until '79, moved away for 10 years, and like the lady over there, I saved up enough money to try and buy a house. I bought a house. Now I can barely afford the damn taxes. It's just getting off the hook. I'm just telling you, you know? And it's... I'm a pretty good planner, and I'm financially, you know, acute about all this stuff. I know how to invest. I know how to take care of my house. It's going to cost $10,000 to paint my house. I just thank you. Please consider those of us that may not be in the same salary category as some, you know? I was never there, and I'm not going to get there now, but have some consideration for the least of us, and then you'll be the best of us.
Thank you. That's all the people who have signed up. If there's anyone else who'd like to speak during the public hearing on the FY 2020 budget, you can come up now.
Good evening. Satyivani Iclay Kalsa, Conway Avenue, Ward 2. First, I'm speaking as the outgoing co-chair of the Committee on the Environment. Due to the term limits, my six-year term is ending, and this may be the last time I'm speaking on behalf of the committee. I want to reiterate our February 5th comments that were submitted earlier this budget season, namely that the sustainability budget should show a maintenance level or a modest increase to reflect our priorities, and that new funding for stormwater management coordinated on private properties should also be included as a new item. Now, speaking for myself, since that time that the committee submitted formal comments, we've had the Green Team priorities formally adopted and a climate change emergency declaration adopted. So both of these, it's imperative that local government matches budget allocations to declared priorities. I think there's a chance to increase some revenue around the stormwater fees. I know you're recalculating the method of calculation, but the proposal was shown to be revenue-neutral, and I think to deal with new stormwater problems, we should be increasing the stormwater fees. Lastly, I have a shameless self-promotion for my favorite regional grassroots climate change organization. The Chesapeake Climate Action Network is raffling off a Tesla for $100 a ticket, and I think the city would be justified in donating $100 to get a ticket to a great group who does lots of great work for the city, promoting programs and incentives at the state level and regional level, as well as the chance to win this car, which should not be driven by city staff, but should be sold off and maybe fund some other programs or buying two electric cars. Thank you. I have flyers. Climate change... climatetsla.org is the website, and you can pick up some... is the website, and you can pick up some flyers from here.
Thank you. And thank you for your service on the Committee on the Environment.
Good evening. Susan Schreiber, Ward One, speaking tonight on behalf of Community Vision for Tacoma. The work refining and finalizing the budget is important work. It shows what Tacoma Parkers think is worth investing in and determines how and whether we can keep Tacoma Park the special community we've grown to love. Community Vision for Tacoma wants residents to understand the budget process better and to empower more voices to be heard in the budget conversation. We think that increasing awareness and understanding will give residents more of a chance to speak out and contribute to decisions about where our money ought to go and how much of it. So Community Vision for Tacoma will be holding a community conversation about Tacoma Park's budget on May 3 at the fire station. We encourage all residents who are concerned about where our money goes and how our, and how our budget grows to come to this event, which will be held from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. City elected officials and staff are also very welcome to attend. We'll hear an analysis from a neighbor with budget expertise and others. Attendees will have the opportunity to ask questions, learn more about our city's budget, and offer their comments. Those comments will be submitted to the city council prior to the final vote on May 15, locking in the 220 budget. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yeah, you, Ms. Hillary, you already spoke.
I just want to add very briefly that I appreciate the comment about Native Americans. One full half of my family are enrolled Native Americans. I am the first homeowner in the entire history of my family. I got there by working. And when I think about that, I think about diversity. It's also about culture. So when we talk about diversity, it's not about numbers and filling in little boxes in some sort of, oh, my goodness, we have X amount of people of this particular ethnicity. It's about culture. And one thing that Native American people have learned to do extremely well is make the best use out of resources, whether it's food, whether it's, it's the hunt, whether it's farming, whatever we've done, we've done through wise use. That's not what I see happening here, and I really respect my neighbor here for talking about that. Sustainability, sure. I've got trees falling down onto Sligo Creek Parkway, you know? No help with erosion, no help with management. But I didn't even get help when they fell on my house, you know, on my truck. That's the kind of sustainability I'm talking about. If you want a healthy ecosystem and a healthy canopy, help your taxpaying homeowners to maintain it. And I can come up with about 10 million other things, but I just had to throw that in there because sitting and listening to that, my brain is on fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the public hearing on the FY 2020 budget?
Mayor, if I, if I can, just because this was, we had the constant yield hearing, I just want to make sure that it's re-announced, that the vote for the budget, on the budget is on May 8 and May 15. So that's something that the state wants us to reiterate when we have the public hearing for the constant yield rate.
Great. And so everyone knows there's no moving those votes. We have to vote those days. So, all right. Now, moving on, we'll have the adoption of the minutes from January 23, our Green Team meeting, and then the council meeting on January 23 and on April 8. Will someone like to move those minutes? Councilwoman Kostic moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Siemens, any changes or comments on the minutes? All those in favor of adoption of the minutes, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. Now we will move on to any other public comments tonight outside of the public hearing.
I'm Denny May, Ward One. I would like to offer a few individual comments about racial equity in Tacoma Park. First, a focus on individual bias in racial equity training is a fine idea. Most of us need that training, including me. But if a city government is organizing that training, and if that city is divided right down the middle by a controversy that touches on racial equity, like the Junction Development, isn't it obvious that if you intend for the training to be supported by all parts of the community, that the training should be highly professional and completely nonpartisan on divisive community issues? Unfortunately, we largely ignored these criteria in our initiatives, which are led by strongly pro-development partisans, good people, but partisans. And why is that? Is it to ensure that the issue of racial equity at the Junction will not be a focus of our racial equity programming? And if that issue is off-limits for our training and racial equity initiatives, where are the racial implications of the city's biggest economic development plan going to be examined? Our city government clearly has a long way to go in addressing this issue on its own. When the city released its required racial equity statement during the Junction Development process, it choked and sputtered and produced and then pathetically revised an embarrassingly incomplete and insufficient statement, a statement that avoided the obvious truth about racial equity at the Junction. The truth is, we have racial equity at the Junction right now. That's right. We have it in the form of a high degree of minority business ownership, a hugely diverse workforce at the co-op, one of the city's largest employers, a thriving co-op that attracts a diverse body of customers from all over the area, and a junction with relatively stable rents in a town awash in gentrification. But now, this racial equity at the Junction is threatened. By what? By the city, of all things, and its proposed development. Years of testimony at the city council have detailed a host of threats to businesses at the Junction posed by the oversized and gentrifying development. If the city is truly interested in racial equity, it should start by protecting that equity where it exists, not trampling on it in search of fantasy revenues. And it needs to openly and publicly address this issue, not create trainings and initiatives led by individuals uninterested in such an analysis. When an institution tries to put into place policies with serious racial implications and then shields itself from examining them seriously, there's a name for that: institutional racism. Tacoma Park is better than this. We need professional, nonpartisan leadership to help us move forward as a community toward racial equity. If we do this, then maybe we'll finally be able to ask ourselves as a city, hey, what's our bias? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. Any council comments tonight? No council comments? We will... Councilmember Searcy.
I guess I got to go first. Hi, everyone. Thank you. So I just want to thank the mayor and city manager for covering while I have been away, the land down under. And truly appreciate, I know that you will cover this in your comments, but I truly appreciate the response from Tacoma Park Police to the Tacoma Overlook situation. It was something that I was following, well, a whole day ahead of time. But I, I truly, truly appreciate the sensitivity, the urgency that our officers exhibited. And although the outcome was not what we would have preferred, I am pleased to know how serious our staff take these types of situations and the fact that we are responding in such a timely manner. So I definitely want to appreciate and say thank you to our police department, all of those staff that were involved, as well as residents of Tacoma Overlook and Hampshire Towers, who I know were, it kind of caught everyone off guard. But I appreciate the fact that our community was able to come together. And I want to encourage everyone to please, please, please pay attention to your loved ones. And if you believe that you have any loved ones that are in a position of feeling suicidal or wanting to hurt themselves, that you please reach out to the appropriate authorities on their behalf. We definitely want to ensure that residents in our community know that there are services available. So if you have those feelings, or if a loved one has those feelings, please, please, please reach out and seek help. And with that, I also want to thank residents who met me this morning at the bus stop to talk about the budget, as well as the Crossroads Farmers Market. So I will have a teleconference for residents on Sunday, and I will redistribute that call-in information. This is going to be a test for me. I don't know how this is going to work. Apparently, my line can handle a couple hundred people, so we'll see. And I will figure out how to mute everyone so if you don't have any screaming babies in the background. But I definitely want to encourage folks to call in so that we can, I can try to address any questions that you all have in terms of the budget, and also be sending out additional dates for bus stop meetings and things. I think bus stops tend to work pretty well for folks. So thank you all so much.
Great. Thank you, and welcome back. There's no one else with their light on. Does that mean no other public? Oh, okay. I saw some, and then they went away.
Councilwoman Kostic.
First of all, I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight related to the budget and those who have contacted me via email, phone, during my office hours. I had a few people drop by over the past week or so, and I really appreciate the feedback that people have given and the discussions we've had, as well as the people who have really taken the time to dig in deep and have really specific and informed questions and perspectives. So I really appreciate that. I also want to encourage people, if you have further feedback in the next couple of weeks, I guess next week or so is really the main time because we'll be looking at our vote on the reconciliation items in the next week. If you have feedback, please contact me. I will be sending out my weekly update later this week, hopefully, and asking for some specific feedback on things as well. So I hope that you will continue to send me your comments and your questions on that. And then I also want to let everyone know that there is going to be a yard sale that has been called Jabokali, which stands for Jackson, Lincoln, Carol, Jackson Boyd, Link, I can't get it right, Jackson Boyd, Carol Lincoln. It's the block, it's that block of Jackson Boyd, Carol Lincoln. And a number of residents will be participating and selling things in their yards. Others have been invited. If you have things you want to sell, people are accepting them. And there are also donations being accepted as well. The proceeds from that are going to go to the Tacoma Horticulture Club and an event that they are holding in May. And this is all organized by a Ward Three resident who had an idea to put something together and wanted to get the neighbors together and do this on behalf of the Horticulture Club. So that is on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and I hope everyone will have a chance to stop by. Thank you.
Great. Any other public, council comments? No? All right. Oh, Councilmember Smith. I thought I saw your light on before.
I just would like to thank Alexandra and Zizi, Ward Five residents, that went through the Community Police Academy. They received their certificates yesterday. It's a great program, and I really appreciate the fact that, that they took the time to do this. Not very many Ward Five residents have actually participated in it, and I think I will sign up next time the police have it. It looked like a really good opportunity to learn what our police do every day. And I would like to echo my colleague, Ms. Searcy, about the situation that happened at Hampshire Towers. There is also a situation that have, a couple of other situations that happened in the city. If you need help, please don't hesitate to contact somebody. Mental illness is real, and you should not feel like there isn't someone there for you. And then finally, I just want to say that we are going to have coffee with a cop tomorrow morning. It's open to everybody. Starts at 9:00 a.m., 8,000 Flower Avenue, the Mansa Restaurant, so please come by. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. I would just like to follow up on the comments on those who are feeling distressed and contemplating suicide or feeling that that might be an alternative, and say that the first line of defense in Tacoma Park is to call the Tacoma Park Police. They're there to help people. That's their, their main purpose in life, and they are familiar with the resources that are available. And so if, if there is a situation, you don't have to wait until it becomes a real emergency. It's important to seek the help right away, whether it be for yourself or for a loved one or just someone you know, an acquaintance. And so 911 is a good place to go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one with other lights on, I'll just remind folks that our hop is this weekend, and so I hope to see people out and about. Also, I want to thank everyone who did go through the Community Police Academy. Councilwoman Kostic and I did it last year. It's a great thing to do, and it does take time, though, so I'm very appreciative of the residents who do it. And I also want to thank the staff who put it together, Ron Hardy and Kathy Plebey. They do a great job, and I highly encourage people to do that. This evening, before our council meeting, Councilwoman Kostic, Councilmember Siemens, and myself met with representative from our ASME union. We're planning on doing that quarterly to hear from our staff who do the work for the city. It was, I think, very helpful to hear from them before our conversation tonight on budget reconciliation. And so I hope other members of the council have the opportunity to do that in the future. And then finally, I also too want to thank our police department, as well as Doris Duarte and the residents in Hampshire Towers, who really stepped up and did an amazing job in a very, very difficult situation last week. And so people really support each other, and I just want to thank everyone for doing that. It was a hard time last week. That's it. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. Wanted to go over a few of the comments. Yesterday, about 20 staff participated in LGBTQ ally training. According to recent school climate report, 85% of LGBTQ youth felt harassed in the past year, and over 50% felt unsafe at school because they're of their sexual orientation. In Tacoma Park, we believe that all youth should feel secure and accepted when accessing our programs and services. So we participated in this program. We had recreation department, police department, library, and admin represented in that group. It was a very informative workshop and was well-received. I was very, very pleased with it. That will, that kind of thing will continue. We both talk about how we function individually, but also how our systems work to make people feel welcome here. Tomorrow, we'll have a parking management listening session. So from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. in the azalea room, residents and business owners can drop in and make comments and express their concerns about parking in their neighborhoods. The city's goals are to understand how to best manage the public asset that we have in parking spaces, and how we should consider parking in the context of the city's larger concerns about stormwater management, land use, economic development, and addressing climate change. So it's a, you know, people tend to think about just in front of their house and where are they going to park. But we, it is a whole system-wide assessment, and we look forward to, this is one opportunity out of a number for resident comments.
Sorry, could I comment on that for just a minute?
Yes.
So there really isn't much time to announce this, so I hope there'll be future things like this. I've been having a number of conversations with people, but I can't tell them about this tomorrow, and I can't be there myself.
Right. I think it was in the newsletter, and we have tried to get some word out, but this is the first of several. Yeah.
So there'll, so there'll be more?
Yes. There'll be more opportunities to comment.
And so that was, that was one question. Second question, if somebody can't make it tomorrow and they have comments?
There will be also an online opportunity very, very soon. It's just not up yet.
And the third thing is, every time I go get my haircut, people in the Junction talk to me about parking.
Right.
So I'm going to ask that we could have a special outreach to local businesses, and particularly businesses in the Junction for whom short-term parking is, is an issue.
Right.
Not just an issue of where do I put my quarters, but an issue of economic availability.
Right. And it is, it is part of the outreach that we've already been doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, I want to talk about the Tacoma Park Success Fair, which is Saturday, May 4th. And it hasn't been explained very well, so I want to take just a moment to talk about it. It's a community event that brings together resource partners to support development and success of Tacoma Park residents of all ages and stages in life. So some people were just thinking this was a youth thing, but this is for anyone at whatever stage they are in life. The event recognizes the unique potential that all people have to improve their lives and their communities. So we'll have opportunities to discuss education, job training, and personal development. And it's an alternative to like a career fair or a college fair. One person who'll be speaking is Kurt Gilbert from our police department, who had an untraditional way, non-traditional way to the police department. And so it's an opportunity to think about if you're not, if you, if you need to change and pursue something different in your life, how might you do it, other than the things that people always just talk about. So it's at the Co-op Parking Lot, City's Parking Lot, on Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. We've been working with the Co-op on setting this up. It's really a great program with our Economic Development Manager and them, and our Recreation Department as well. Sadly, I'd like to note the passing of John Guernsey. A number of people knew him. He was a fixture in this building. I was always trying to get rooms available. It's one of the things I remember. And he had put on a musical, Love at Last Sight, in this room. But he's written a book, he's done music, and he kind of camped out in the library, and the library really passed on their concerns and their thoughts for, for he and his life. So just passing that along. I want to provide kudos with the, about the event that happened last Wednesday and Thursday. I want to have particular kudos to the, our Tacoma Park Police Department. They, with assistance from the Public Safety Staff from the City of Laurel, Montgomery County, and the FBI, very sensitively addressed a situation of a person in distress at Tacoma Overlook Condominiums over two long days last week. The care that the officers provided to the person in distress, the person's family, and the residents of the complex was exemplary. While the ending was not what we worked so hard for, the safety of the community was maintained. Counseling was made available to residents, building staff, and our Public Safety Staff, as well as others, and it was needed. The coming together of the community around this incident was affirming and showed the best of Tacoma Park at a difficult time. It touched my heart to see people bringing out coffee to the folks who were there. Everybody was under stress, but being supportive of each other. And I know Deputy Chief Powell was a wonderful leader on site, and we, he and I went back on Saturday to meet with the residents, along with Grace Wiggins. And it's, it's just been a difficult time that people are getting through together in a good way. And so I, you know, I'm just really happy to be in Tacoma Park and have that kind of sense. But it was tough. On a happy note, I want to give kudos to the recreation staff for their hard work in making this year's egg hunt a success. Although it was a last-minute change to the Monday, people came out, and it was a gorgeous day. As you mentioned before, kudos to the police department, and particularly Kathy Plebi and Ron Hardy, for implementing the Community Police Academy. Got nice compliments from a number of the, of the participants, and we're looking forward to continuing that. There were some wonderful suggestions at the end about some other options that we may have, and so that's something that we're pursuing, including how might we address some of the same kind of program in Spanish, or some other kind of ways to, to get the word out. And today is Administrative Professionals Day, so I've got a picture of some of our professionals. We really appreciate their hard work in keeping our place moving along behind the scenes, and so I want to thank them. On hiring update, I just want to note that we're hiring, advertising, or interviewing for a number of positions. A new major position that is available is Human Resources Director. So that position is now posted, and if you have recommendations, have them look at the website to apply.
Great. Thank you very much for that. Any questions for the City Manager? No? All right. Moving on, we will now move to our work sessions tonight. We have two work sections. The first is on budget reconciliation, and then we'll talk about discussion of committee appointments. And I think before we get into the conversation about budget reconciliation, I just wanted to say a few words, because I feel like we go from like all these big-picture conversations, and then we hit reconciliation, and we start getting into like talking about very, very minute details. And so the first thing I wanted to say is thank you to our city staff for providing information, answering questions, not just from us as a city council, but members of the community. I think it has literally been nonstop over the last three weeks, and so we appreciate all the information. So I think four things I've been thinking about as I approach reconciliation this year and our budget. The first is about opportunities, and I mentioned this when we first looked at our budget, that we want to make sure that as we are budgeting moving forward into the future, that we have healthy enough reserves and flexibility in our budget, so that when good ideas come up, or their opportunities may come our way, we have advantages, and we have, we're in a place to take advantage of that. For example, this year, when a group of young people came to us regarding a plastic straw ban, we were able to look into that and actually pass a plastic, a straw ban this year. Dorothy's Woods was another example. And there's always things that come up that we don't know of right now, that we want to make sure that we can take advantage of. The second thing are unknown needs. Some of these we do know. The fact that the current federal administration is, has policies, and every day thinks of new policies that really disadvantage people in our community, either through now new housing discrimination policies coming out, or other things. I think we need to keep that in mind, that at any time, as we have over the last two years, there may be greater needs that we need to meet in our community. The third thing is no, is our known needs. We know that, as members of the community have said tonight, that we have residents who are on fixed incomes. We need to look at ways, and I know Councilwoman DeBala has been doing a great deal of work on this, on other tax credits that we could extend. We need to look at ways of continuing rent stabilization in our community. That is one way that we make sure that people do have affordable housing here, but it does actually cost the city money to do that. We look at affordable rec programs for seniors, young people, people with special needs, and advancing our priorities of affordable housing, racial equity, and climate change. These are our known needs, and we need to keep them in mind as we go through reconciliation. And then finally, stability and financial responsibility. I've said this before, and I think it's good for us to have an objective goal that we look towards when we do our budget each year. I think we should be looking at setting a tax rate, that's the constant yield, plus the employment compensation index. Just so folks who haven't been here every week the last couple of weeks, the ECI is set by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it's the compensation cost for state and local workers. And so we have a deep commitment in our city to our employees. Again, just in case people don't know, as we've talked about before, all full-time employees get full benefits, and we have set a minimum salary for full-time employees at $40,000 a year. As many people have pointed out, as we've had our budget discussions, personnel costs make up a good, a very large portion of our city budget. And so I think moving forward, as we're looking at how we should be fiscally responsible and stable, setting our tax rates, constant yield, plus the ECI makes sense for us. And so I'd also like us to think about that as we look at reconciliation. And at least for me personally, meeting with our union representatives tonight really hammered home the fact that we need to take good care of our city employees here. And as we're thinking about budget reconciliation, if we truly mean to cut something, that means we're truly cutting it, and we don't expect our city employees just to do the work. And that we make ourselves feel good, or squeeze a little bit more out of the budget, and then expect employees to do the work. If it gets cut tonight, that means we're actually cutting something. And we put emphasis on that, because I think it was really emphasized tonight by the, our union reps. So yeah, so I think we'll first take some, if anyone has on the council any questions to ask, or points to raise before we get to our reconciliation list, we can do that now. Councilwoman DeBala?
Yeah, I, I had four things on my mind, but one of them you've already talked about, which is whether the council wants for this round, or for next year, to set a target. And one possible target would be the one that, that Mayor Stewart suggested. So rather than lots of little details, have some focus for where we want to wind up, or about where we want to wind up. So I was also thinking about the, the constant yield plus ECI as a target for, or as a, some kind of a guideline for, for our work on reconciliation. But the other, the other three things that I had on my mind were personnel costs, which you also talked about, and, and I was going to ask if, we, we got a lot of information over the past few days by email on personnel costs, and how things are, are budgeted and estimated, and I was going to ask if either the City Manager, the Deputy City Managers kind of run through that for everybody else. I wasn't privy to the emails. But before you do that, I was wondering if I could squeak in one more, which is I would like to also talk about a proposal that I have for expanding the, the current state and county tax credits that the city doesn't already honor to cover city taxes for those people. And when we get to the right part of the evening, I'll go through that in a little more detail and ask a couple of logistical questions about that. But that's what's on my mind. So if you, if either of you wants to talk about summarized personnel, personnel costs, how you estimate, what you base it on, the salary schedule that, that the city has, those kinds of things that maybe residents don't already know, but which, which helped me to understand what you were proposing.
I'll try to, try to do it briefly. I think, I'll, I'll start with taking notes from the section, the page that I added, had added to the budget agenda item this evening, which is my comments on wages and salaries.
And is that available?
It's online.
Okay.
It's on the agenda page.
Are there copies over here?
There's some extra copies here if somebody.
Do we actually have copies here? If anybody wants one.
So the, you know, a number of residents have asked about the salary levels of staff in Tacoma Park. We do compensation and classification studies about every three years. It's part of our union contracts to keep up with that. What happens when we do that is we make sure that job titles are appropriate. We try to match those job titles with our comparable cities, and then we, and then we look to see how we're doing in terms of our wage scales for the, for the folks. So we recently had one completed. It's not published yet. It will be out very shortly, but we've used it as we consulted and prepared this budget. As we saw the compensation and classification survey results, we found that we are, our salaries are close to the midpoint of the municipalities with which we compare ourselves. And those municipalities are Bowie, College Park, Gaithersburg, Greenbelt, Hyattsville, Rockville, Laurel, and Annapolis. There were several positions where Tacoma Park wage ranges were, raid, okay, wage ranges were lower than they should be, and those will be adjusted. There are several positions, as the mayor noted, that, where the city of Tacoma Park pays above the going wage, because we don't pay less than $40,000 for a full-time position. All of the department head positions in Tacoma Park are within the wage ranges of our comparable municipalities. Most of our senior leadership team salaries are in the $120,000 to $129,000 range. The police chief's salary is $152,000. Deputy manager's salary, deputy city manager's salary is $145,000. We look at wage scales in Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and the District of Columbia Governments for information on the level of competition within the labor market in the D.C. area. Some of the reason is because some of our positions aren't comparable to other municipalities, those in the libraries. We don't have comparable library positions in, in municipalities in Maryland, so we do have to look at Montgomery County for library positions. And when we look at our senior leadership positions, candidates are often looking at county positions as well as our positions, so we look to see how competitive we might be for them. Unfortunately, Montgomery County pays a lot, and they are actually considering fairly significant wage increases again this year. Most department head positions in Montgomery County pay over $200,000. The wages for positions covered by the two collective bargaining units are subject to negotiation, and we are actually going to be going into wage negotiations probably in May. We're scheduling those dates right now with the two unions. We have Ask Me and Local 400 that represents police. After the negotiations are completed, and the city council approves the outcome, because you have a role in that, any budget adjustments will be made at that time. The city council sets my scat, my salary, and you can do it in many ways, but generally you look and see also what the comparable wages are from surrounding jurisdictions. Most chief administrative officer positions in the D.C. area range from about $160,000 to $295,000. The most city managers in the Maryland suburbs also rely, besides their base salary, have a car allowance ranging from about $4,800 to $7,200, and some receive non-salary payments. And I did put, provide a list of the wages within the last year or two of the municipalities that we kind of compete with. They do range from $160,000 in Greenbelt to $231,000 in Rockville. And I'm in the middle at 195.8. I'm the only one, I think, that does not get the car allowance and the extra salary payments. Montgomery County CAO makes $280,000. That's down from the previous CAO who made, I think, 313 or something like that, who retired. Attracting and retaining skilled employees is essential for Tacoma Park to be able to carry out the council's goals, and for the day-to-day operations of the city to be handled in a professional manager, in a, in a professional manner. It's recognized that it's a challenge for a small city, and in a region that has high housing prices, a strong employment market, and limited wages. For the last three years, I feel the city's been doing a good job with a balanced approach to wages. Part of what we do is we look very carefully at, at these compensation studies, and because of the, it was five years ago, we did one where we were very out of whack. We had to do a three-year phase in. I think it was about $2 million under-valued of wages that we had to catch up on, and it was not something that we could address in a year. So we had to phase that in. Since then, we've had a schedule that provides resetting the scale at the ECI for wages, not the ECI for wages and benefits, which is, I think, what's been referred to for how the city might look at, at setting a different level. And we also look at small step increases that reflect gathered experience of a person in position, with an additional small stepping, small amount of the same if they receive distinguished on their valuation. What we have found is that it actually seemed to work pretty well, because the last compensation study came very close to the amounts that we are paying folks. And so while there's adjustments because positions change, I feel like we've been taking a reasonable approach. That is something that we will adjust with our unions, and it's what we look at when we look at the non-union positions as well. The ECI, the Employment Cost Index, for state and local governments, as of December of the previous year, is the, is the wage, is wage rate that we look at each year. For a number of years in a row, it was a 2.1% increase. This year, it's a 2.4%. This year, it's a 2.4% increase with the total wage and benefits at a 2.6%. And so I think it does reflect that there's been more and more difficult employment market in the DC area, and so the wages have gone up some, reflecting that change from 2.1% to 2.4% for wages. That's, I think, what I can say right now, but if there's some specific questions, I'm happy to answer them unless it's something that is part of the negotiations.
Well, I guess I could start. I would be shocked if I'm the only person with a question, but I'm the one with my mic on. So, so to see if I get, if I've got this right. You mentioned that you have a standard table. And because you tie the table to the Employment Cost Index, so the folks feel rewarded and they get compensated, you know, for what they're worth. So that's 2.4% for wage, wages.
Right. The Employment Cost Index is not so people feel like they're rewarded. That's to keep up with the midpoint of the market.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. So the 2.6% is?
Is wages and benefits. So if you're talking about, so if you're talking about how, what's an appropriate standard or gauge to look at for how the city government cost might increase from year to year, you could look at constant yield plus that amount that represents wages and benefits. So when we're negotiating wages, we, we're not, we're using the number just for wages. We're not adding on to that with benefits because benefits come separately. But when you're looking at the impact on overall on the city government, you're paying the benefits, the health insurance, that kind of thing.
So that makes it 2.6?
That's correct.
Per position, not 2.4.
That's right.
So then what is the, how is that reflected in the budget that we're looking at now?
Well, it, it's not reflected. It's part of what you can look at while you're trying to determine the appropriate tax rate for this coming year. I believe if you had.
Can I just clarify, because I think it's a different question?
Okay.
So the, the increase, you're asking if the increase, the 2.4 increase is reflected in this budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So the 2.4 increase for employees is budgeted?
Yeah.
Yes.
It looks in some departments like it might be more than that. And so is that a reflection of a couple of positions that are still way below the?
Yeah, one of the things about Tacoma Park is, in some respects, we're pretty small. And so we know the actual cost of individuals. We know how much that particular person's salary is and which choices of health insurance and et cetera go with that person. And so some people who've been here for a longer period of time may make a higher amount, and some that, you know, the police department all have higher benefits because we pay it to the pension fund, which has a separate amount. And so sometimes it really has to do with the kinds of positions that are in a department or the actual specific people. If you look at a larger government budget, like for the county, they just do averages. They, they say, oh, there's 42 people at this wage, at this position title, and they average the amount. And they don't, you know, the difference of switching out, one person retiring and a young person stepping in at a lower salary makes no difference in the total. But for here, it can make a big difference. And we actually saw that with the adjustment that you'll see in the reconciliation budget on personnel, that we made a small adjustment to the speed camera because a person who had been there for a long time retired, the incoming person is at a, at a lower salary. And so just, so it made it a difference in that, in that account. So we really do it person by person.
But on average, if you added everybody up and added it all up, it would be 2.6% more than last year?
No, we're at three point about, we're, when you look at it all, it, we're a little bit higher. And the reason that we're a little higher than 3.3% is that we've expanded two positions that went from half-time to full-time. That's our proposal. And, and we did have to make these adjustments to, I think, two position titles affecting maybe six or eight people where their salaries needed to go up because they were under-market.
Can I ask a quick question related to that? How do things like merit increases for performance play a part in that? And how does that relate to the 2.6%?
Well, it, I mean.
It would, they theoretically get more.
You get more. So that's, so, you know, one of the things that you'll find is that we work really hard to save money elsewhere so that we try to get that total amount down some. And that you'll see that in our operating budget, that other than personnel, we, we've reduced even more. But there's, in, in the current schedule that we have, which is not what's being proposed for FY '20, but in the current schedule, you get a one and a quarter percent increase for a step and one and a quarter increase, percent increase if you received a distinguished evaluation.
And you're proposing?
We're not, we're not discussing what we're proposing exactly because we need to negotiate with our unions.
Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question about the municipalities we compare ourselves to? The list that we have on the handout he gave us?
Yes.
Now, I understand that, you know, some of these, like Gaithersburg, they don't have any union shots. Is that correct?
Some of the, of the cities don't, and some do.
Right. And then do, have we ever figured out what is the percentage of their taxes that comes from commercial versus residential?
We have looked at that in the past years. I haven't looked at it most recently, but almost all of our competitors, their primary, they have a large, much larger proportion of their tax base is commercial. One of the things that I'm really pleased with is that in the past year, in the new assessment, it's clear that the, that the increased, we have an increased reliance on commercial tax base in Tacoma Park, and that's the direction we want to continue.
So I guess, since we are comparing ourselves to these other jurisdictions?
Yeah.
And they have other options?
Right.
For taxes. It is going to continue to put us until our commercial base is at a point that it's comparable, if not more than residential. It's always going to put us in this position where we have to rely on residential residents.
That's right. But I will say that there's some interesting differences too among the different municipalities. In Prince George's County, they get a little bit more on tax duplication proposed than we do. And, and they, and, you know, there's some services that we provide that those, those other jurisdictions don't. So there's some things that are comparable and some things that aren't. The thing that we all have, though, is we're going after the same employees.
Right.
So even if the tax base is different that pays for them, in terms of the labor market, we're talking about the same people.
Okay.
Any other questions on this?
I, I would like to suggest, and I don't know if this, I don't know which thing makes the most sense. This, a big chunk of the, of the budget is personnel, and it's something that you don't tinker with at the last minute after a budget is proposed. It's something that requires a longer-term project. So I would, either, either I would like to ask for a work session where we look at this more closely, perhaps a closed session because we might be talking about union ish, union issues, or, or ask to be part of the, if a council member's part of the, part of the team that works.
I think we should discuss, we can discuss as we're getting into the union negotiations and perhaps Councilwoman DiBala, next time we have a meeting with the union reps, you can be part of that. That make sense?
Yeah, that's part of it.
Yeah. I don't know. She seems to be.
I know. It does feel like you're looking at me. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't want to piggyback necessarily on that specifically, but I do think in general that we, a lot of things have come up during these budget discussions that I think it's hard for us to really delve into as deeply during this time when we're crunched and we're trying to finish this budget, that I think it would be useful to loop back and have some work sessions on, and that may be one of them. One of the things I was thinking about was revisiting some of the rec center, the rec department discussions that we kind of started here, and we were sent a lot of really useful information related to that. And I, you know, I just, in terms of bandwidth, I haven't had a chance to dig through it as much as I would like to. And when we're focusing on the whole budget, it's hard for us to delve into those things. So I think the idea of having, you know, multiple work sessions following up throughout the year could be really, really valuable. And maybe we can think of some of those things and brainstorm some ideas for what those could be.
That sounds good.
Mm-hmm. No, I, I mean, everyone's lights on, so I'm just trying. I'm, I just want to make sure that there's no other questions regarding personnel at this point and the information that was shared so that we could move on regarding the budget. Okay? I think the other question Councilmember DiBala raised was extending some of the credits that the county does, that the city could do. And I think one of the questions is just logistically, is that feasible in the timeframe we have to work into this budget or not?
It's a little bit tight, but I, but there were a couple of questions that, that have come up. And one of the things that I heard just recently from Councilmember DiBala that I hadn't heard exactly before was the idea of just piggybacking on the existing county ones. Because one of the concerns that I had heard earlier was that those, that those tax credits were too restrictive, that they, you had to be in your home for 40 years, and then you had to, you know, and there was all these things. So it was difficult to, to get to that. And so that some of the folks were asking, well, what about 30 years or whatever? And so there's a couple of approaches that could be done. It's, first, I don't want to have something that's enormously staff-intensive where we have to evaluate actual income data from people and that kind of thing. I'd prefer, it's one of the things that's useful about how we piggyback on the homeowner tax credit program and the renters' tax credit program, is that those are already applications that go through the state, and so there's a list, and we just assist those folks. We assist them to the extent to which all of their taxes are paid. So we, sometimes we don't pay the full amount that we have authorization to. We go up, sometimes we just, we pay only so that they don't have any property tax as opposed to paying even more than not having property tax. So that's been one of the things that we've done for some time. But it's very useful because we've already had the state and the county identify the various people that are eligible. We could also double up on some of the other tax credits that are out there, and you could identify which of those there are that you would want to do that. Again, part of the question is, who are you really targeting and who do you want to target? And to what extent is it reaching people that have significant income issues with, with the property tax? A completely different approach could be simply setting aside some money in the budget to give a set amount to everybody who meets a certain criteria, that they've lived in their house 25 years or they've, whatever. And so you could also do those kind of computations that aren't considered tax credit, but they're a different approach. So those are the things that you could identify, just block some of money and work that way. One of the reasons that I'm a little bit concerned about trying to take on a whole new program is estimating how much it would cost and not being into something that, that we're not sure we have enough money for. So I'd, I'd like to have some cap to it as part of the, as part of a budget discussion. I'm open to a variety of these. We've looked into and provided the information on how many people receive the credits that this county offers, you know, and I guess the question is, is that, are those the folks that you particularly are interested as a group, as a council, wanting to help?
So the way, the way that I was looking at it was two, two ways. I was looking at how could we target the folks who need the most help in some, either, in some kind of program to help them? That was the bigger question. We talked about this a few weeks ago. One way to, one way to take a step toward that is to extend to city tax credits a credit program that this, that the county or state already has. So we already do it, as the city manager said, for the homeowner's tax credit, which is for lower-income homeowners. There are two others that we don't do that already extend to city tax credits. And that is the, the four, the long-term homeowners, 40 years and either senior or military veteran. And yes, that's pretty restrictive, but we don't do that now to just say, if you already get it, and 40, 40 households do, if you already get that for your county taxes, could we tag on, what would that cost? Could we tag on to the, I'm suggesting something that's a start, that we can put in the budget this week, next week, and work out the details, and then have a work session, so two, two parts, and then have a work session a little further down where we can focus on a more, the people who aren't eligible for the things that are out there now. So the two things that are out there now that we don't already do is the long-term residence credit that the county has and the renters' credit that the state and county have.
No, we, we, we help the renters.
Okay, so I had an email that said that we didn't, so I.
We used to not, but my understanding is that we do now.
Okay.
That was, that was our, that was what we, we agreed to this past year.
Okay. That's good to know. So then that means instead of this being, by my rough mathematical estimate, $35,000, it's a little less because we take out the renter piece. Apparently we already do that. That's in the $152,000.
So what is, but when you say 35,000, what are you talking about?
I'm talking about taking the 40 folks who, I'm looking at Jason because I sent him the map.
Well, and you would, and you would identify as the same amount that the county pays? And that's what the city would pay?
Depends what you mean by amount. Use the same criteria. And yes, I proportioned it. I said the county gives X amount, and we would give Y.
This is where you were saying that the city's taxes are about a third of the county's.
Yeah, so I just ballparked and said that comes out to about $35,000, yes. And so my first question was logistical. Could we even do this for this coming fiscal year? Well, it sounds like maybe we can. So then, let's talk about, about how much that is and when we could have, after this budget is settled, a work session to look to the next year for the folks that are not eligible for any of this at this point. So.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
How would you fund it? Would it come out of the housing fund or?
I was talking about the general fund, which is where that other one, the, the homeowner's tax credit that we have now, where that, that comes out of the general fund. So I was talking about taking it out of the general fund, yeah.
Everybody's thinking.
I'm sorry, I'm a little slow. And why would this come out of the general fund instead of being a housing affordability program that could potentially come out of the housing program? I mean, the housing reserve fund.
Well, I, I mean, I think one of the, one of the questions here is, is does it really meet housing affordability? And I think that's, you know, it targets a different group than homeowner tax credit, for example. So I don't think it's as income-sensitive. It's, it's more that you, you've been in your home for a set period of time. I think there is a maximum value of the home as part of this.
Yeah.
But it's pretty, it's, it's pretty high. So I, you know, I guess the question is, does that, does it, in your judgment, qualify as a housing affordability item, in which case we could consider it that way? I would just have to think about that. I don't know if there's any issue with that.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable to assume if you've, if you've been living in your home for 40 years, you're probably on a fixed income at this point, and so you could probably make that jump.
But I guess there's fixed income, and then there's people who have wealth, are on fixed income and then also have wealth. So I do think, I think I agree with you that exploring and maybe matching the, the tax credits that the county does that we don't do now, I'd be hesitant to take from our housing reserve rights. I'd be hesitant to take from our housing reserve right now, given the work we've been doing on the strategic plan. And there's actually not that money, much money in it and there are things we want to do with that. And I think having a work session. Following up on how we may want to do this in the future and discussing, okay, do we want to then roll it into the housing reserve fund or do something like that? And we can explore that in the future. But I think we're probably talking around thirty thousand dollars or less. If your calculations are ballparked.
Which is. Not a lot of money in the city budget and is a huge amount of money for somebody who's getting a credit.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Kovar, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I, I would like to learn a little bit more about the population and their income levels, which maybe we can get, but. Depending on that, I wouldn't personally object to having it come out of the. The housing funds and we could just reduce the housing fund contribution by the same amount. So in that way, sort of achieve that. But I don't.
It doesn't work that way on the bottom line, but.
In what, in what way doesn't it?
I would need to get back to you, but the way the contributions to the reserves are in this separate category, kind of, so. It's, it's not just a one, it's, it's not that simple and I, I'm not going to explain it right at this moment.
All right, well.
Because otherwise I will get it wrong.
We can get it explained, but I'm sympathetic to it. I just don't feel like I know exactly who the population is that we're talking about and I'm, I'm not saying therefore we shouldn't do it. I'd like to just get a better handle on that myself. I, I would like to find ways of helping those for whom it's difficult. I guess one of the challenges and in a future year, if, even if we did something like this, in a future year, if there were a way, if we had more time. To look at not just the length of time that they've been there, but maybe how they've been affected by the reassessments because that's. Strikes me as something that really gets to the heart of what you're talking about since there's been such a wide variety in that, but that, we can't do that.
Right.
Now, clearly.
You know, the other thing that we have really tried to do, particularly, you know, particularly with, for example, sustainability budget grants and those kinds of things. Is to help offset a lot of the costs of somebody in their home. And, and those have been actually quite successful. And so that's, that's another way that we have tried to, to assist people in their homes and they don't have to have been there for as long.
But I, I think part of the challenge is that we're talking perhaps, and I'm assuming without knowing anything about the data. That we may be talking about residents who are aging in place, who have a level of what can be viewed as wealth. That would make them perhaps ineligible for certain income-based programs.
That's right.
But over time, the burden for them, because they are on a fixed income, will increase over time. And so. I, I do think that, you know, as part of our housing strategy, we do have to think about how to deal with those residents. Or try to support those residents who are aging in place and may have things like home repairs that are pretty substantial. And yet would not qualify for certain income-based programs that could support them in those efforts. So I agree with.
That's in the housing strategic plan. That's part of it.
So I, I agree with Councilmember Dibala that there's a need for us to think through what some of those potential options are. I'm a little hesitant without knowing the population, who we're talking about and how much, you know, a little bit more detail about who we're talking about. But I do think that, you know, as we're thinking through the housing strategic plan, that we are thinking about these types of credits and programs. Designed to, to hit that population, which I think is, is growing in the city.
Yeah, I would, I, I agree that we should look at the options. I was willing to take. The county's word for it that they went through a fairly extensive discussion and this is where they wound up in terms of one of their, yeah, well, maybe not. But for a starter, it seemed to me like a pretty, pretty easy hit, but. Was, were you about to say something?
No.
Okay.
So would you like to add that?
I would like to add that to the reconciliation list and we can.
Confirm the numbers.
Confirm the numbers and, and look, get a little more information out to people.
And make sure that we already do the renters.
And double check on that.
Yeah. Anything else, Councilmember Dibala?
I think, I think maybe I'll let somebody else talk for a while.
Councilmember Smith.
A couple of things. I just want to first say, I want to thank David Navari for his emails, Arthur David Olson for his comments. Paul Hubner and Mary Machuie. I've been listening to everything that you have said while we have been going through the budget. And I just have a couple of questions first. Arthur David Olson mentioned about the ERI.
ERR, yeah.
In the EIR, in that we're charging two percent interest. Is that, have you confirmed that?
So the, the way that the spreadsheet works is that items that are major capital. Pieces of equipment are on the list. If it's a vehicle that's got a life expectancy of ten years. We pay one tenth of the amount each year as part of, into this contribution until it's time to replace it. So we have the money available for that. There is an inflation kind of amount, like two percent in there. But what we do is every year we look at the actual costs. So for example, if we're talking police cars and we know how much the police cars are going for, we adjust the amount so that. We don't just rely on two percent interest or, or, you know, there may be a different kind of technology change that either rises, raises or lowers. That piece of equipment. So we look at that. One of the things that I do, because we do this adjustment every year. And it could be argued different ways. As he mentioned, the total amount, if you do the computation, says six seventy-five or six seventy, six hundred and seventy thousand. I generally lower it to the closest fifty thousand as an amount to put in. That's just because these are all estimates. And that's been my process along the way. And as we, we've got some big years coming up where we have a lot of major purchases, so. You know, there will be adjustments as we go. It used to be that we. Double counted lots of things and so we would say, you know, we're looking at a thirty-year list. And we have the same police car bought three times because they last ten years or something. And that we've determined after a long discussion with council that that's not a, a reasonable way. That, that kind of over. That over reserves money for those kinds of things, that really we should always be just putting in enough for that next vehicle or next piece of equipment. So we made some decisions not to double count those. I'm always happy, I'm really glad that he's looking at the list because. Plan on, on using his brains as much as possible as we refine the spreadsheet and, and he's. Offered to come up with a more simplified spreadsheet, which is wonderful.
We gonna buy lunch? I'm just kidding.
But, but, you know, I think that thinking through about what is the right inflation rate is important. I'm happy to have a real, good, close look at that.
All right. Let me just say in general, you know, this, this budget concerns me for a few reasons. One, Gaithersburg isn't going to raise taxes and Rockville's not raising taxes either.
They have huge, they, so if I can just interrupt, there's two major differences. One is they have huge commercial.
I don't disagree.
Tax base. The other is they don't have their whole assessments done at the same time. So they split it over the various years. And so they can phase stuff in.
I, I don't disagree.
They also have tremendous reserve levels.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree about any of that. All I'm saying is when people compare us to them, they know that they're going to say. Tacoma Park's raising taxes and Gaithersburg and Rockville are not raising taxes. I, I agree with you on all those points.
The other thing that we have, which, you know, is, is part of the uniqueness of Tacoma Park is that half of our units are multifamily. And we do value the tenants that live in those buildings and that age in place in those buildings and we want to keep them in Tacoma Park as well.
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I don't disagree. I'm just.
I understand. No, I, I would love to have Gaithersburg budget. Please, that's, but that's not what we have.
But the optics of what we're doing.
I understand.
Two other municipalities in the twenty-one in Montgomery County. Were compared to Rockville, Gaithersburg. So that's one thing. The other thing is, you know, with.
I'm, I'm sorry, and I also just want to note, many of the Prince George's County municipalities have higher tax rates than we do. So. Montgomery County's a little bit special in that. So I just do want to identify too, that we're not just out there in Maryland, you know. We're more, a little more associated with Prince George's County.
Okay.
Just for the notes.
I don't know how our Prince George's County cousins think about that, but. That's one thing. The other thing is with Amazon bringing HQ two here. There are going to be major changes in this entire region. And with this tax increase, what does it say? Not now, but two, three, four, five years from now of what Tacoma Park is going to be.
It says we're a fiscally responsible community that is very carefully looking at the balance of services and costs for our community. I, I feel really strongly that although I hate tax rate increases and I wish our accessible base were a little bit bigger. That we have really carefully looked at this and, and we're, we don't play games with the numbers. We're not taken out of a pension fund like others do and put it somewhere else. We're keeping to those kinds of things. So I think if somebody looks at our budget. From somebody who's dealing with Amazon or whomever else, they'll say for a small community, it's very well-run.
And the reason I say that is going to be a ripple effect. I mean, there, there are going to be people that want to live here that work.
Sure.
There or these other companies that are eventually going to move to this area. So there's going to be a lot of prosperity. So how does that impact the people that are living here now that want to age in place?
No, it's a, it's a huge issue. It's a huge issue for DC.
It's so, you know, I just want to make sure that when we make these decisions, that we know that it's not just about. The next twelve months or the next fiscal year.
No.
But this is going to have consequences that are unintended for years to come.
That's right. And that's, that's also the reason that I strongly ask that you don't just tweak the budget. And you recognize that if some cuts have to happen that, that affect personnel, that you're cutting positions. You're not just saying, we're not giving a wage increase or something. I, I mean, to me, that. It has to be a sustainable thing over the next few years. And so that's part of also why we look really carefully at those reserves. And, and how do ongoing costs and ongoing revenue. Follow a similar line? That's, it's, it isn't something to look at just one year. You're absolutely right.
Right. Okay. And then let me talk about something I would like to add to the reconciliation list. The fifty thousand dollars for the third floor renovations. I'd like my colleagues to consider that.
To, to cut that?
Yes, to cut that.
To cut fifty thousand from the one twenty-five?
No, this is for the, this list right here. It's fifty thousand. Just zero it out.
Oh, I thought that was fifty one twenty-five. Okay.
And that is it for this round. Thank you.
Just to be sure, you had other cuts as well. You wanted additional ten thousand, cut five thousand from OTBA and five thousand from Crossroads Development Authority. And add another twenty thousand to the community grants. Okay.
Were we, did you want me to say the other ones that I had or did you want me to?
I think yours are a rep, do we have the chart that we can pull up?
I, we don't have it to pull up tonight.
Okay.
So, but we did reference the, so I, money for the, to restore the sustainability cuts.
Yeah, we had those. Did you have others that are not reflected on the sheet in front of you?
Because I felt I couldn't add if I didn't subtract.
That's right.
I also proposed cutting, taking out all the, all three of the level four. Category four items that are in the CIP and there's only three of them. And, and one is public art to have that. One is public land management plan implementation, whatever that is, take that out. And one is a closet in HCD to take that out in order to balance out the addition back in, the restoration of the sustainability money. So that, that was what I had proposed, but you all didn't see that in the email that I sent around this afternoon.
And I did, I did note in that email that the. Third, the third floor funds were out of the facility maintenance reserve, so it doesn't affect the bottom line for tax, for the tax rate.
So it's not going to be, we're not going to show it on?
We'll mention, we'll put it here, but I'm just saying that it won't have the same kind of an impact.
Right.
As some others.
Great. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I have a couple of specific questions that I'll get to as we go along, but I just want to make a few. General observations too, just about where we are. And, you know, I think. I would say first, I do appreciate the, the comments from the members of the community, the community that spoke earlier and. There's, there's a lot of passion in, in many of the presentations. I think it's a tough situation because there's not. A, a single kind of objective truth about what we should do because we have services that we provide. We're trying to be sensitive to, to taxpayers. We want to be fair to employees and we want to try to have a, kind of a stable. Year-by-year process in terms of what we're able to fund and how we do it. So all of those things kind of intersect with each other in various ways. I think the, I agree with what the mayor said about having a longer-term idea about. How the budget should be developed and I'm not saying I specifically agree with her per se that the, we should agree on constant yield plus ECI. That might work, it might not, but I, I agree, several others have said it also, that we ought to have a, one or more work sessions devoted to. Helping to explore those options well in advance of, of next year's budget so that we can, and maybe we can decide over a multiple years. Timeframe that that could be the type of goal we would want. Now, you know, you can make an argument for CPI as well, just because. The ECI seems like it works well for calculating personnel, but CPI may be a better one for what residents and taxpayers pay. I'm not passing judgment one way or the other. I'm just saying that that, that that's a possibility, but I think we should have one or more work sessions to, to deal with that. You know, for this year, even if we were at constant yield, which means that overall the city is estimated to take in the same amount of revenue as next year, as this year. And that obviously varies because new places open and are built, et cetera, but that comes pretty close to that. But even within that, there's a wide. Or can be a wide variation in how much people pay because as we've seen, the reassessments vary widely and it seems like maybe they vary more widely. This time than they have in the past. Mine went up by a single digits, a low number of single digits. Other people on my street went up by a lot more. I'm not really sure why that would, that would be true. So even if we were, say, to either go with the constant yield or go with the current rate. Both of which are down from the proposal, that's still, is going to, that's going to amount to a tax cut for some people, tax increase for others and. And maybe first still others, not, not too much of a change. And so there's probably no way, in my opinion, to give every single person. An actual reduction in the amount that they pay without completely eliminating a lot of the programs that we provide. And I said this previously. I don't want us to fall in the trap of, as a blue city, I think the GOP tax. I don't know if the GOP tax plan was done specifically with the idea of making it harder for blue states and blue cities, to use those terms, to. Provide key services to lower-income people and others, but I think at a minimum, probably they didn't mind if that was the result. And I don't want us to fall prey to that, but I do want us to try to reduce. What the current rate in the proposal is. There's nothing unethical about the proposal. I just think we could bring it down some. My guess is, you know, we're going to end up talking about a rate that is somewhere down around where the current rate is in constant yield. Is it very close this year, unlike past years when there's been a, you know, a wide difference between them? In the three years that I've, the three cycles that I've been through, the rate has gone down each time. And again, I understand that people look at that and say, well, it doesn't matter that the rate went down. I paid more in taxes depending on the assessment and maybe when they combine it with lots of other taxes that they have to pay. The amount goes up and, and I think we have to be aware of that and sensitive to that, particularly this year with the federal law having been changed. So a lot of my comments are cutting in different directions. I say that just because I think that's the, that's the reality of, of what we're facing. There isn't one single thing we can do to address all of this. My personal view is that we ought to come up with a series of cuts, not to programs in a way that just makes the staff do more, but to areas of expenditures that we can remove that will bring the proposed rate down, uh, toward constant yield. Whether there's support on the council for an array of those things that would get us there, I can't say. But I think that's the general approach that we should be taking.
Thank you. Did you have anything else to add to the?
I have a few questions, but maybe others could.
And why don't you ask them?
Well, I might need to just take a minute to, to prepare them. So I don't want to stop other people from, well, I just want to, I want to make sure I have the right pages in, in the, in the document and so on.
Councilmember Searcy.
Um, thank you, here. So, one of the things that I am trying to think about is, is, you know, as Councilmember Smith mentioned, um, longevity, right? Um, and we've spoken a lot about the need for economic development. Um, we've spoken about the fact that a number of properties that are along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor have actually seen decreases in their taxes.
Right, residential properties.
The residential properties have. Um, we talked earlier in this conversation about how our colleagues in Gathersburg and Rockville are able to have lower tax rates because they have these booming commercial districts. Um, and yet we're, we're talking in some cases about reducing resources to some of the few entities that we have that actually are designed to try to help support our businesses. Um, so, uh, I know that on the reconciliation list, we've already, um, put OTBA and the CDA, um, one proposal is for them to be at their, um, current rate. Um, and I just want to reiterate, um, mention my support of that. Um, I also have a question about the, um, commercial district improvements. Um, and what exactly that might entail? Um, is it possible for staff to give a little bit more detail around what that would be expected to cover?
I guess I answered one of the questions and one of the responses that was.
You've got to put on your mic.
Yeah, sorry, Kate.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I can send you something. That was included in one of the many rounds of responses to questions that we sent.
While I was walking the hills of New Zealand. So, yeah, that would be helpful to know. Um, because while on the surface it may appear that we don't need, um, those kinds of, um, expenditures right now, um, with things like the purple line and, and, and.
We have a lot, we have a lot going on and, and there's, and I anticipate that in fiscal year twenty, we will have activity in every commercial area of our city, Ward Five, Ward Four, Ward Six, and Three and Two. And so, uh, and, and how we intersect with that, with our small staff, where, will be, I think, exciting, but it, it's going to, it's going to be a lot.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree. Um, and definitely support, um, trying to make sure that we're investing in the, the programmatic areas that might ultimately yield returns for us down the line. Um, and I know that we often don't like to think in those terms. Um, it's, it's great to have lots of feel-good programs, but in many cities, you kind of have to start with building your commercial districts so that you have the money for the feel-good programs, right?
Um, and, and if I may interrupt, I mean, that is why we have supported for so many years the coming of the purple line. And we are at that point where it's the transition, and we have to help the businesses through it because in the long run, it will help them and it will help us.
Mm-hmm. Um, so, thank you so much.
I can respond to the question about the neighbor. I just pulled up the answer if you'd like me to read it really quick.
Please.
Sure. So, um, the funds, uh, budgeted there are to support implementation of the economic development goals and the strategic plan, including the anticipated need to maintain or improve public and quasi-public spaces in Tacoma Park's commercial areas. Encourage residents and business owners, owners to take pride in their local commercial areas, and support local enterprises to help better maintain commercial areas. Potential projects include commercial facade modifications, abatement of exterior commercial property maintenance code violations, replacement of deteriorated signage, or the installation of new signage, and other small capital improvements. So in short, it's kind of the city contributing, um, to, uh, you know, doing our part to, to encourage um, property owners in commercial areas to, to, you know, do the right thing and, and improve the look and, and, and feel of wherever their buildings are.
And particularly like if there's a, if a place that's bringing down the others around them to try to address a problem.
And I've seen simply a municipality replacing an awning in a very visible place for a business that simply could not afford to do it, making
A huge difference.
a huge difference because of where it was located and as an entranceway into the city.
Yep. Um, so with that, I would like to, um, propose reinsta- or, you know, I guess, I'm new to this reconciliation thing. Well, this is my second time around, but I was too scared to speak the last time. Uh, so I, I would.
I don't believe that. No, I'm not buying that one.
Um, so I, I would like to, uh, to, to add that, back one hundred thousand dollars back in for, um, the commercial district improvements.
So for the purposes of the reconciliation list, right now what it has is eliminate that funding from the budget and then cut it in half. Do, we don't need to add a, add this back in?
No, we just, we just vote against that.
Okay.
Okay, so I would just vote against taking it out, taking it out, either one, because the others too.
Right. And just so, right, and we, right, there's two, um, I can't remember who did it. The other thing that was added here, just as an, um, as you're discussing, is that in the current proposed budget, there is no money for consultants regarding New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center.
So, so the mayor.
I, well, I requested fifty thousand dollars to be put in for that specifically and thought we could take it out of the other pot, split, yeah. In market, that. So, we can talk about that more, but just to let you know that was some of the conversations we've had.
Okay.
Can I just, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I just had a very quick question. Have we done the neighborhood, um, the community, whatever it's called, that we're talking about, the, the, um, neighborhood, commercial district improvements? Is that something the city has done previously, or is this a new?
Well, not with this name, but we've done a number of these. We do facade programs, we've done streetscaping, we do some, sometimes some signage improvements. So it's varied, often it's been, in the past, often it was CDBG funds, but it's a variety of ways that we've handled that. It's, it is a standard city kind of function. Um, and so depend, you know, sometimes it varies where the money comes from and exactly the form. But we've always had that, like almost every other year or so, there's been some effort at that.
And with this money, won't it be directed by this gains code?
It would be by the city, yeah.
And just to confirm, so for CDBG funds, they typically require a match, right?
And, so we, we have.
They don't? So they don't require a match at all?
So, so for CDBG funds, um, some of the programs that we've had, we've asked for a match um, as a contribution so that it, there's buy-in to it, but sometimes there are programs that don't. The CDBG funds though do have to be in, targeted in the areas where there's income eligibility. And so sometimes, sometimes the places where we really want this money to be spent doesn't meet those boundaries. So that's, that's part of the other discussion. And we don't actually have very many, much CDBG money right now.
And it's always in the counting block.
Can I, can I just mention something else related to the commercial, um, piece, if you don't mind? So, um, I, I just, I do want to mention number one on, uh, page one sixty-two of the budget. It talks about an array of expenditures, twenty thousand dollars to implement the strategic plan, another, you know, about thirty thousand dollars for various other kinds of support for, uh, businesses in the city, which I don't think is being double counted there. And so we don't know how the plan is going to work yet, and we're allocating, you know, potentially a hundred or at least fifty. And I agree with the mayor that some funds should be provided for the, uh, uh, New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center. Um, and we've also, of course, cut the, um, eliminated the inventory tax. So there's a lot of things that actually are being done for, um, in one way or another, commercial areas. And so, um, I, I don't understand personally exactly what's included in, either in these items on page one sixty-two. I did ask and, and you were away about the, for a better explanation of the, of the commercial a- amount, and, and I'd probably be willing to support some of that in there. But it's not clear to me how this doubles up with that and why we're spending all this money before we've even completed the strategic plan. And I understand we had to wait to hire somebody, so I, I get that. But we don't have no idea what the plan's really going to say.
Well, we have actually a lot of information on that. We have presented it. Um, we can.
But we don't know what we're going to support.
So one of the things, in terms of the actual expenditures, uh, some of this is up to our Economic Development Manager, um, as she goes out and meets with people. So whether it is helping to arrange a mentoring program or, um, some of the, um, you know, entre- job entrepreneurship, um, sessions she's had that are very, um, well received, those kinds of things, they take funds. And I will say that the amount of money that we have allocated to economic development is paltry compared to any other municipality. Almost any other municipality. So she did cough up a little bit of money. She gave up some hours of an intern, a variety of things, even as she walked into this job, and, because we were taking cuts from everybody. But altogether, it's really a small pot. And I, so I, um, I'm happy to have her explain a little bit more about how she might see it being spent, but, but it is. It's something that we still have to have a conversation about.
My point is, we're agreeing to a lot of my, potentially, that is four things we haven't yet actually agreed to, number one. Number two, we have done a significant tax cut for many of the businesses. Not all, it depends what their uh, inventory process is like. And, uh, uh, you know, we talked about earlier, and we haven't done it, imposing a separate tax rate. So I, I just don't think we've sort of abandoned them, is, is the point I, I would like to say.
I agree.
I'm not contesting it.
Can I just, can I, can we just go back to the format? I mean, I think we're, we'll go down the, the list. Um, I don't think we're at the point yet, right now, where we're debating each of these or doing votes on them. So, given the hour, um, I would, maybe, and since Councilwoman Searcy wasn't, like, just if you have other we were in the moment of asking questions and getting clarifying things and adding things to the list, not necessarily debating them yet, so. And just, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I like to argue. So I think, I think that was the only, um, the only question that I needed some clarification on. I think the others, the others were fine.
I would, I would just like to, we've di- we've dived into the reconciliation list, and I think we skipped an important overview, which is that the council asked the city manager to suggest, as painful as they are, some areas of potential reduction, and, and you've delivered.
Right, but we're not there yet. So I'm, I just, because we haven't gone through everybody who wanted to say over all comments.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I was just going to say that. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
All right. Um, all right, Councilmember Seaman, you're the last one with the light on, and then we'll go through the reconciliation list.
Yeah, it's, uh, thank you for, uh, bringing the discussion back so we could finish this.
I sometimes try and remember.
Mr. Seaman, could you speak into the microphone?
Sure. Is that better?
Yes, it is.
Great. Um, I wanted to, uh, it's been a while since you discussed it, but I would like to go back to the, uh, equipment reserve. And, yeah, I was on the council when, uh, we really revamped the way that we did that. It used to be, uh, a reserve that was, um, not maintained at any, uh, methodical level. It was, uh, in fact, uh, a lot of times, things were taken off of the reserve list so that there would be more money to balance the budget to do other things that we wanted to do. And, um, I'm concerned, uh, when I heard, uh, Mr. Olson's comments tonight, that maybe we're drifting back into that, uh, scheme again.
No, sir, absolutely not.
I was a little, uh, confused about the discussion of the two percent or one percent because, uh, at different times, uh, it was called an interest rate, and at other times, it was called an inflation rate. Which, which is it?
It's simply an estimate that, um, a car that cost fifty thousand dol- well, a car wouldn't cost, car that costs twenty thousand dollars this year, in ten years when it's up, would be a little bit more than twenty thousand dollars. So it was a, an.
So then, in that sense, it's an inflation rate?
It's an inflation rate.
Okay, and so.
We're not getting, I mean, we get very little interest. Obviously, we invest some of the funds, but we get very little interest because nobody gets much interest on accounts.
Right, okay. And I, I was, it seemed from what Mr. Olson was saying, he was talking about that it's, uh, it's being credited at a two percent rate in the, in the, um.
Yeah, there is also an interest rate discussed in there. It's a little confusing, but, but the main thing is.
And I think he was saying that, you know, that's higher interest than what we could possibly be getting now. Um, and it seems like we, if we have a formula in the spreadsheet that was put together for us, that we could update those amounts so that we, they do
Yeah.
do keep them accurate. And then you said that there were some rounding things that you do, but yet.
I, I round down.
Yeah, but, uh, the amount differences between what, uh, what Mr. Olson was saying was needed of seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars is like ninety thousand dollars.
No, that's, that was a, that was a different computation that he referenced. Um, we, I feel, I feel very comfortable about the, the number that is, that shows up at the, kind of the bottom of the list.
I think the, um, you know, the, the more scientific formula way of doing it than a, than a gut feel of it is, is more accurate.
Right, so part of what I believe, and I, I was going to go back and consult with him, but I believe that he was adding some things in that before we, that we had taken out because they would otherwise be double counting. So that's why I, I don't believe we used the wrong number. So I, I will get that information back to you, but, but I feel very comfortable with the number.
I, and I would be interested to learn more about the double counting concept, um, because, um, again, the way the formula was working, I don't see how anything would be double counted. The vehicle would be put in the spreadsheet one time.
It wasn't. It was put in three times. That was the thing. Um, because it's a, over a thirty-year period, if there was a ten-year item, it would show up three times. And so you were paying for all three cars as opposed to one car, one tenth of each time.
Certainly, certainly that wouldn't be correct, but, uh.
Right. And so that was a big discussion. With Councilmember Mail in particular made that a major discussion, and so we went through and, and re, with this council, uh, made adjustments to the ERR, which I think are very sustainable.
But that doesn't mean that I agree with the decisions, so.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
And then I just also wanted to, uh, um, comment on the, uh, things. Again, everything I wanted to bring up has already been talked about, so I'm not going to belabor it tonight. But, uh, you know, I think we do have to pay, uh, special attention to those residents who are on fixed incomes, who, uh, you know, tax increases are a, uh, maybe a small amount for some people, but, uh, they're also a great burden to others.
That's right.
And so I appreciate the, uh, uh, agreement to discuss that more thoroughly and see what we can do to help those people. Because they're not just those people, they're our neighbors.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Great. All right, uh, Councilmember Kovar, did you have?
Just three questions. Um, so this is really small in the scheme of things, but I don't personally think we need it, which is new furniture in the council conference room. So I would just, I, I wasn't even clear how much that was for, but I would just suggest, we don't, unless others here think we need better chairs up there or better tables.
This, this is for the, the credenza, the alongside the wall that's sagging, and, so.
I mean, it's, I, I don't know what other people think, but that doesn't strike me as a really necessary one.
But that's fine, so we can.
We could, we could put that on the list.
I, five thousand dollars for.
And then, um, this, this one, I, maybe you can just explain about, and we may have talked about it in the past, but on page one nine, on page ninety-one of the budget, talks about the funding for education efforts for, um, I'm not sure if it's just Safe Grow or some of the other, um, community, um, requirements. So can you just, or I don't know whether you or Jason would, what, what the plan is for that, how that money is used?
They do a variety of things where they, I mean, partly they have the handout bags. They, um, have, have seeds, they have materials that they go out and they talk to people with. They have examples of better products versus harmful products. So it's, it's, you know, it's handouts, it's, yeah.
We've done the bus shelters.
Right, bus shelter ads, um.
We do the garden, the. We do the garden, the, bring in the master garden to give, like, master gardener to give out little, to give presentations. Host events like last night's viewing of the movie, the documentary, the photo contest. Straws.
Then, and the last question, we've talked about this quite a bit, so I apologize, but I've had a, when I look back over it, I had a hard time getting a fix on, I think there were maybe three different categories of sidewalk expenditures, which is new sidewalks that either through the existing petition process or in some other way, we might want to do that.
Right.
The ADA...
On city roads.
On the city roads, and then state, so are those the three separate categories? But really, it's two categories of ADA plus...
Plus the new sidewalks.
And is there a separate just repair of existing city sidewalks, not specifically connected ADA?
There's not, there's money in the Public Works budget for minor repairs of sidewalks, and we do that. It's, it's not enough to call it out as a major issue.
Okay, okay. But so, what's on the list now is 100,000 out of new sidewalks, right?
If I have to, if I have to make a choice, it's to postpone doing new sidewalks as opposed to doing ADA repairs, which I think are essential.
Right, okay. But so, the new sidewalk, we're talking in theory at some point about maybe a different way of agreeing to do those two? Is that right? Which we haven't done yet, right, but that's something...
Right, because the petition process is, you know, has race implications.
Right, right, okay.
I also want to note that the line item for new sidewalks also includes construction of a traffic calming as well.
Yeah, it's often done at the same time, because sometimes there's a bump out where you do the crosswalk and that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, we don't, it's not, we're not capable of pulling it up this evening?
I didn't think we were gonna be doing that tonight, because I thought we wanted to get a full list.
Right.
So that then on Monday...
Well, I just wanted to run down the list to make sure we have everything.
Can I ask a quick question? Regarding OTBA, are they requiring members now to pay some type of fee or...
My understanding is it's not a requirement, it's a suggestion.
Yeah.
And the CDA?
There's a requirement.
Okay, I just want to make sure, make that clear. Thank you.
All right, I will just read aloud, and then if people want to comment, then this is, we can spend the next little while. I just want to make sure that we have...
I have, in front of me, the kind of master list. The master list that includes the things that were added late this afternoon, early this evening. So, if you want me to read over it...
That would be great, because this is really tiny.
It's tiny on my small screen also, but, but I can go, go over it. And, and most of what, there's probably, I don't know, seven or eight additions from what's in front of you right now. So, I'll, we're just going, we're just going over what's on the list right now, in case something's missed or there's anything else to be added. So, first off, I'll go over the decreases, reductions. The first is decrease personnel and health benefit savings at $308,700. That was one of the administrative items. Because previously, what does it say on the spreadsheet that you have?
It's supposed to be 324.
The 324 included the funds for the speed camera, the speed camera fund personnel.
Difference?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, the one... Yeah, it says 308. So, the, the one... Okay, wait, and I sent that one today with today's, that should have had today's date on it. We've been making tweaks as things have been sent in. And the printed one that you have has, has everything up until this afternoon on it. So, that, so that accounts for the difference between what was previously on there, the 324. We parsed out some of the funds that were actually not from the general fund. They were for the speed camera fund. So, sorry for that confusion. And, you know, this is, this is a living document that changes every time you guys send something in, and we add to it. Eliminate council retreat facilitator, $5,000. Eliminate county lobbyist, $18,000. Eliminate the I Can Shine Bike Camp, the full cost for $16,000. Reduce the I Can Shine Bike Camp by $12,800. And just by way of explaining that, is, we have a very good chance of getting the 80-20 grant funds from the state, but we aren't eligible for that unless we can demonstrate that we have budgeted specifically for the matching funds. So, if we budget $3,200 for the I Can, I Can Shine Bike Camp, there's a very, I've been told that there is a very good chance that we would get the grant. The state views the program very favorably and really appreciates Tacoma Park stepping up to, to run it.
Is lobbying allowed while you're reading the list?
I was providing that justification because that's new information for you all, something that I put in there to discuss at the appropriate time. Eliminate community grants program, the full program, including the position for $106,500. Reduce community grants funding, not getting rid of the program, but reducing the funding for grants, which is currently at $60,000. And I don't have an amount there because I think that's something that you all would, would need to discuss. Reduce contribution to the police pension in excess of the actuarially recommended amount by $50,000. Eliminate the neighborhood commercial district improvements, the full budget, which is $100,000, or reduce it by half. So, a reduction of $50,000. Reduce new sidewalks by $100,000. Reduce new street rehab by $100,000. Combine the Independence Day and Celebrate Tacoma festivals, which would, could result in a reduction in the budget of $12,000, possibly more. Reduce council conferences. There's currently $30,000 budgeted for council conferences, and I believe it was Councilmember Kovar who suggested reduction in that amount by $10,000. Same for staff conferences, reducing that by $10,000. And we would have to figure out where those cuts actually come from, if that's something that the council decided to do. Reduce commemoration commission plaques from $12,000 to, by, by, by $8,000 for a total of $4,000. Reduce the public art budget by $25,000. Eliminate public land management plan implementation by $25,000. That's the total budget, budgeted amount for that. Eliminate HCD storage construction by $10,000. That, that's one that's in the FMR, the facilities maintenance, maintenance reserve. Reduce the third floor renovation budget by $50,000. Reduce, or eliminate from the budget, the funds to replace council conference room furniture. And then moving to the adds that I've... What was, what am I missing?
Sorry, Councilmember Smith had, had, yeah, you had the third floor, but Councilmember Smith had also asked for additional cut to the OTBA and the CDA.
Right, for another, for another $5,000, so another $10,000.
So, I thought, I asked the clarification, I thought Mr. Smith had said that it was, so you want to reduce it? We've reduced it by $10,000 over the current, you want to do it another $10,000? Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that, because of the email that was sent earlier, but I will add that. Is that it? Or did Mr. Kovar, was there something else?
Oh, actually, so...
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I wanted to add a reduction of the $15,000 in reviewing the possibility of police accreditation. I'd like for them to look into it this year, but I think we can have them come back and report to us with how much that would be and exactly what the accreditation would be, given the chief's reporting to us to date regarding accreditation. It seems like there's a different possibilities, and the cost can be pretty high. So, I'd rather just have them plan this year and come back to us and tell us, rather than just allocate $15,000.
Okay.
I have a question. Are we up to that? I have a question.
I can do that.
But we, don't, if we do the credits, the tax credits, that would also be...
The tax credits would be in addition.
You're right, I'm sorry.
I was asking a question, a clarification for, on us, on another item.
Sure. What, what's your question, Councilmember?
On new sidewalks, based on what the city manager just said, reduce new sidewalks, is that ADA sidewalks or new sidewalks?
New sidewalks.
I just want to make sure I got the right account. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, going into where there have been requests for adds, increase OTBA and the CDA back to FY19 funding levels, which would add $10,000 to the proposed budget. Increase sustainability contract budget by $34,000. Increase hours for the sustainability intern, which would be an additional $8,120. Add rec center public engagement consultant, which we estimate will be in the ballpark about, of $50,000 or so. Increase community grants funding back up to last year's funding levels of $80,000 by, so that'd be an increase of the current budget by $20,000. And then, funding for supplemental tax credits, which I don't know what dollar amount to put in there for now.
I think the, the guess was $35,000.
Okay, I can put that number in there as a placeholder, if nothing else. That's all I have.
Great, any other additions or questions on this? Councilmember Kostic?
I have some specific questions about individual items, but is that something, are we gonna go through each one, or...
Yeah, let's, let's do that this evening so that we can prep for Monday. Because what I'd like to do on Monday is really have us kind of vote on each of these and what we want to stay on the list. So, let's walk down the list now and kind of like ask any clarifying questions for that. Do you want to start us off?
Sure. My first question is related to the first one, which was the decrease in personnel and health benefit savings. I know there was the 124 for the double counted position and the 85 for health benefit savings. It looks like there's an additional 100. Am I missing something?
There was another, as we were really scrubbing the numbers, we just found some miscellaneous personnel numbers.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, we've been looking so closely at this.
Thank you, yeah, that's, that's great. Do you want, just ask other ones? All right. In terms of the, where am I looking here? So, combining Independence Day and Celebrate Tacoma, I think the Celebrate Tacoma was currently budgeted for $12,000 already. And it's anticipated that if they were combined, that full 12 would be saved.
Well, I actually, so this is, this is a discussion really about, potentially, how much money we want to give to the Independence Day Committee, because in the past, we gave quite a bit for fireworks, and if there's not fireworks, you know, that was $25,000. And so, so this kind of bounced around a little bit. The actual cost for Celebrate Tacoma of $12,000 has a lot to do with staffing and paying musical events and those kinds of things. Some of that kind of double counts if you're already doing musical events and things for the Independence Day festival. But I think the, you know, we don't run Independence Days, so for us saying what happens, that still has to be a discussion. And I know that there's interest in not just saying we're ending Celebrate Tacoma, but that we're somehow reflecting it as part of, you know, in a combined approach. So, we just, we just took $12,000, but it could be more, it probably, it probably could be more off than $12,000, I think. That's, that's my gut feeling about what costs are. But if somebody has a very specific idea about what they want to see or not see, we could cost out separately.
Okay. Moving down farther to the public land management plan implementation, what does that involve, and what would we be losing if we remove that 25?
You know, do you have the answer? I need, let me get, let me get that back to you, the full description. We've been working on this stuff, so we've got a lot of information. I just, I don't want to describe it wrongly.
And that's related to the study of open space in the city?
But also, but, but also, it also kind of dovetails, even with parking stuff, how do we deal with, with all of the impermeable surface in this community? And how do we really become sustainable? And, you know, and so how do these things function together? This isn't just saving some open space. It's, it's really, how, how are we looking at the whole city and making sure that we have green space and that we have other kind of needs met across the city? But I, let me get a statement back to you.
Yeah, I would be interested in that as well. If I remember correctly, during the last budget cycle, the idea was that once the plan was finalized, then there would be a specific project that would be identified, and that these resources would be used to fund whatever that project was.
Right, and there's could be some cool stuff, but I need, I will have to get it back to you.
Then I wanted to find out a little more regarding the proposal to increase the sustainability contract budget and the intern. What, what do we not have currently in the budget that we would gain from doing that? And what would the outcomes of that be?
So, what is in the current budget is the status quo. It's the same number of hours for the sustainability intern that they currently have. When we were soliciting initial proposals from departments, there was a request to increase those hours. And when we were doing our, at the administrative level, several rounds of initial cuts, that was one of the things that, that was reduced, so...
So, part of this is the, is the fact that there's different kinds of projects each year out of sustainability. And, you know, in the past couple of years, we've had some big community contests and those kinds of things that required a certain amount of attention. And we're more in a, we're waiting for the greenhouse gas inventory and resiliency study, and then we'll try to, then we'll see what implementation steps need to come out of that. And so, it was felt that we might not really be ready to spend a lot of resources on it in the fiscal year '20. And so, it was something that we felt was a, if we had to like trim a little bit, was a place where we could trim without really cutting the meat of the grants and things that we were depending on.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? So, for this particular intern, it was mentioned earlier that there was a request for interns in other departments, economic development intern, for example. Is there an intern currently in place that could maybe use those hours assisting other departments? Or is it the case that you have...
It's more specialized.
Okay.
Yeah, our, our interns are very specialized. We squeeze them, so, I mean, we can always...
In this case, I don't think there's an easy transferability.
Okay, thank you.
And then, my final question was in regards to the rec center public engagement consultants. I know that's something we've talked about previously. Do we feel like we're in a place where we have enough information that we could utilize a consultant effectively in this year? And would that move the project forward effectively?
I think we are in a place where, I think the timing is such that, that we could use one that may be more in a plan at the earlier stages of it than in the, than in a lot of detail. I think we still have to talk a lot about, about next steps. I'm a little, I mean, $50,000 to me is a little tight for this. And it may be that it rolls over into the next year and you add more, because especially if there is the community engagement level that we want, it may take more time. And so, I think, I think I suggested $70,000, I got talked down to 50. So, just, just saying, we were trying to be, you know, careful with it. We were trying to think of timing on it. We still have planning to do, so I can't say specifically.
Can I ask a follow-up question then? So how much of that is for engagement versus planning, would you say?
It's mostly for, it's, it's planning for the engagement, it's not like planning for the project, it's a different.
How to, how to determine more what the community would like the project to?
That's right, and how to have them as part of it, yeah.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a comment on that? So a couple of us went to the rec committee meeting last week, and there was some discussion about it, and they, they would very much like to be involved in determining what, what the consultant does and how the consultant does it, which I think makes a great deal of sense. Also, the Friends of the Recreation Group would like to be involved in shaping what the consultant does and how they do it, and there may be resident groups in that neighborhood that want to be involved in shaping what, what the consultant does and how they do it.
And I will say, at the, at the, at the budget open house at the rec center, there were a number of residents of Hampshire Tower and Tacoma Overlook that had been feeling left out of this discussion, so they would actually like to have some say as well.
Yeah, I, I think one of the benefits of, I, I agree with the points that were raised earlier, fifty thousand dollars is not enough. What I could envision is kind of like a multi-pronged kind of project task kind of thing, with the idea being there may be some extension that would be possible to kind of deal with other tasks as funds become available. But at fifty thousand dollars, I mean, best case scenario, you get a really detailed approach to how to engage the community, how to work with, you know, just some kind of real tangible action plan for community engagement around the development project. So I just, I just say that to make sure that expectations are set, because if you do the math and take the overhead off, like.
This ain't, this ain't it all.
You're lucky if you have a one person full-time for three months, right, at fifty thousand dollars. So if, if, you know, I, I do think it's important for everyone to be engaged, but I also think that one of the benefits of having an external consultant is that they're external, right? And that we could provide them with a necessary list of key stakeholder groups and entities to engage with, but I, I do think it's important to make sure that there's a level of autonomy that they're able to provide in order to get the broadest scope of who, all we need to engage and the like. So definitely engage with folks along the lines of coming up with the task and what we ultimately want to accomplish, but I do want to make sure that whoever we bring in, we can empower, if we're able to fund it, or able to empower to, to do the necessary engagement.
Is it? Okay. Great. I know, I was like, I was looking down, I'm trying to think, so I, I would like to say just to make this list a bit more manageable for next week, would anyone object if we took out the line that eliminates the I Can Shine bike, the full cost of it? And just keep in the reducing minus the grant amount? I feel like that would be something we could agree to tonight, if that's okay? Yeah, okay. So then, that's at least one thing, that's a little easier.
Could we also get staff comment on the, not the sustainability intern, but the other sustainability piece?
I thought we just did.
Was that, was that both of those that you talked about?
We'll, we'll make sure that we get something written to you.
I can, I can tell you what was reduced from the original two, two hundred thousand dollar request, which is an arbitrary amount in the sustainability contracts line, I thought the question might come up, so I looked it up a little bit ago. The business clean energy contract was reduced from the initial request of thirty thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars.
And that was based on our experience to date in working with businesses?
Correct. So it was actually kind of right sizing a little bit, you know, you can always do more with more money, but sometimes more, you know, we're not able to use all the money. Residential energy efficiency rebates, we reduced from ten thousand to five thousand dollars for the same reason.
For the same reason.
And then there was a new sustainability program line, that was nineteen thousand dollars, and we just eliminated that, so that's where those.
But so that two hundred?
Came down to a hundred and sixty-six.
How much was it for the previous year for that, that general sphere?
I don't know off the top of my head.
The previous year, the year we're in now, was two hundred and forty-seven thousand.
But that included interns and stuff, so. Just saying.
No, but I'm saying.
I'd have to go back and look at the lines.
The apples to apples, maybe you can give us later, the two, what the two hundred compared to, that's, that's just what I would be helpful to have. Thank you.
I, I will add that it would also be helpful for me to get a sense of what it was last year and this year, because it's hard to compare since it was pulled out this year, you don't have the previous years to compare to, it's kind of on its own.
That's right.
So getting that pulled together would be helpful.
We, we can, we can pull that together, and, and at the same time, you know, the, the program itself, the sustainability program itself shifts over time. As we have planned for, you know, moving forward, we have talked about fiscal year twenty possibly being like our, our planning year, regrouping year. And so we don't, you know, we, we have a single person in sustainability and.
Plus the intern.
Plus the intern, but, you know, if, we can put all the money we want in there, but we might not have the capacity to actually spend it.
Okay. One, may I make one comment about this, which is one reason that I proposed it is because we are going to get, as we have with some of the other programs, we have a plan going on, we're going to get the plan, and then that'll be December, and then we'll be waiting till the next July if we don't have the funds to act on the recommendations of that plan, just to make that point. I, can I ask a question about a different item on the list? The one thing that wasn't transferred, the two differences between the list from the city manager of potential recommend, recommended reductions, and the one we're looking at right now was the difference between three twenty-four to three oh eight, we explained that, and the folk festival. And I don't know if that was an oversight, because it doesn't seem to be on the ten thousand dollars, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was suggesting reducing, I mean, that was, that was actually, that was what was proposed, right, to reduce by ten thousand?
Well, but it doesn't, this is awfully tiny print, but I can see it.
No, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, I had said, I mean, that was just something that I raised as if I had to choose, that would be one thing, but the council members have not picked that up, if you want to add that to the list, that's fine, but I did not.
I just assumed that everything on your list was already on here.
No, because I'm not the one to put things on reconciliation list, other than technical things like the personnel numbers where we're right, you know, we're making corrections.
I also had it on my list, I mean, I wasn't the one who added it, but I, I did have it on my list for whatever reason, I think it was on one of the previous lists.
Again, I think it was when I, I mentioned that, but I, but we certainly, if that's something somebody wants to have on it, to reduce the amount by ten thousand, that's fine.
Does somebody want to put it on the list?
I'll put it on the list.
Okay, it's on the list.
Okay.
Could, could we get just a clarification on the HCD storage? I'm sorry if that was mentioned before, I didn't quite catch what that was about.
So we're, we're trying to do a variety of improvements and changes that just make a few corrections on the third floor. And, and this was actually an area where I'm not actually sure that we would use it completely as storage, but we're trying to like fix some areas, given that the staff.
But that's separate from what Mr. Smith was talking about, the fifty thousand?
That was different.
Okay.
Yeah, but the HCD storage was out of the FMR, right? Yeah, so it's, it was part of budgeted out of our facilities maintenance reserve.
And so then the last thing was for the grant, community grants, it feels like that's floating a little bit here, so in the same spirit as what you suggested with I Can Shine, should we at least figure out what the proposal is, because right now?
I can speak on that.
The proposal, it looks like there's a couple of different questions.
There's several different options on that that I've heard.
In the twenty thousand dollars that I put on the reconciliation list, this afternoon I talked to Grace Wiggins, and she said that they have made a concerted effort this year to go after providers that have never received a grant from the city. One, and two, they have experienced working with lower income communities. So some of these applicants include the Ethiopian Community Center, Hispanic Business Foundation of Maryland, God Glorified Church of God in Christ, Elite Soccer Youth Development Academy, Performing Arts Center for African Cultures, and Hampshire Towers Tenant Association. So I, I know that last year we talked about potentially cutting this program, but I think that Grace has made a real effort to provide us with options to actually work with the group of people that I don't think we have seen anybody else be able to, you know, penetrate this, this group.
So you're proposing to go from the current level of sixty to eighty, is that what you're proposing?
Right, to return it back.
Where it was.
Which is where it was before. So there's three proposals, so right now on the reconciliation list, Councilmember Smith, I'm sorry, Councilmember Siemens, this way, had put on eliminating the program completely. And then, I can't recall, someone talked about reducing community grant funding below sixty, but didn't give a number.
But they didn't give a number. Right.
And then we have adding the twenty thousand to bring it back.
But sixty is what's in the proposal?
Sixty is what is in the proposed budget.
Sixty is what's in the budget, right, the proposed budget. So does anyone want to propose a number, or can we take that one off, reducing from the sixty thousand now, lower? I mean, I can make the argument that if we're going to continue the program, just death by a thousand cuts is like really awful, like to do to the, the grants program, so I could, I would say either we decide to get rid of it or keep it the same. But I think if we just are continually cutting the community grants program, we should have a bigger conversation about that, because I don't think it's fair to the residents who, and the staff who spend their time on this, so I would suggest just taking that one out.
And there are going to be, you know, consequences for residents, I mean, a lot of people rely on these, these programs.
Yep.
I'm sorry, Mia, what are you proposing?
So, so I think the question was the, the, the item that said reduce community grants funding with question marks, that that be taken out unless you have a specific number, but then it starts to, you either take the whole program or leave it.
Just leave it or add to it. So can we, I guess, right, so I'm, I'm saying, let's just reduce it down, let's take out that reducing the sixty thousand, let's not even consider that.
So then there are two options.
Right.
What are the two options?
Get rid of the whole program?
Take one step at a time, and then I think we're going to wrap up, because obviously we're getting demission returns now, that's fine. You asked if we should simplify the community grants, and so I, I put a proposal on the table to get rid of one of the three options that are now on our list, which is the option to reduce the current budget, that is sixty thousand, by some amount. And what I'm saying is, either we decide to get rid of it completely, or leave it the same, or add to it, but this, just whittling away at the community grants is not fair to residents, not fair to the people who have submitted their proposals, and our staff, and folks who work on this. So if people are okay with that, we can just take that line out. All right, all right, will you go with that? Okay, good. So then what stays on the reconciliation list is eliminating the entire community grants program, or adding twenty thousand to it to bring it up to what it had been previously at eighty thousand. Good? All right, I just have.
If both of those fail, then you just leave it.
We just leave, right.
It stays at sixty.
It stays the same at sixty, yeah. I, I just had, I actually had one question on the proposal on the third floor renovations, is that for the lactation room?
There's part of that is that, part of it is some security changes, and part of it is also reacting to filling in the atrium floor and, and how it affects kind of how things work. And then part of it funded out of the cable grant money is on the section that's closer to where City TV is and make some of the changes there, because right now neither, neither area that you approached, the doors is welcoming, and so, so part of this is how do we make that a better space? We've got some fairly simple plans for that, but it's, other than the lactation room, which is a, is an important part, the, the other things aren't as essential, but they should be getting done because of the effects of filling in the atrium and, and how the area functions, so I can argue it different ways.
So, so the fifty thousand, I'm sorry, so the note you have says that it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and the suggestion is to take fifty thousand out, but what would be left, among other things, would be the lactation room?
Right.
Just restating it, okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right, I think people have their lights on, but I don't know if they were residual lights, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so homework, what is going to happen on Monday night, because we, we can't move the vote on the budget, so Monday night, come back, I will ask the W C manager to send out again the reconciliation list. And we will be making decisions Monday night on what stays on the reconciliation list, and we can come back to it for a final go-through on Wednesday evening. But be prepared on Wednesday night to be making decisions.
Right, and, and just.
I said Monday, Monday night, sorry.
Right, so one of the things, just, I know the deputy city managers won't be here on Friday, please note, not a huge ton of last minute requests, if you've got questions, please get them to me tomorrow, it makes it a lot easier, appreciate it.
One question that I had asked, so I'll just ask it again, since you just mentioned it. Last year, when we were looking at new positions, we had a, a table that looked out over a few years for the wage and salary for that position, and that was very helpful. And I understand that the two part-time position requests are not nearly as large, but I'd still.
Right, we'd be, we're getting that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, we're done for the evening.
No, we're not.
No, we're not, oh, we're not.
Oh, that's right, that's right, you've still got work.
Thank goodness, you're, see, this is why you got to sign this, all right, committee appointments.
All right, my hard task here, I want to let the council know that we have one committee application for the Arts and Humanities Commission, it is Bill Crandall from Ward Two has applied, and we hear no objections or questions, it will be scheduled for our next meeting.
Awesome, thank you. Now we're adjourned. Thank you. Yeah.